Thanks Laura. Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Monday, November 10th, 2014. If we could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the agenda, I did have just a little something I wanted to say about this past week that Georgetown has had to endure. A little over a week ago, our one family in one community suffered a devastating loss, the death of a child. Cameron Coy was a 15-year-old ninth grade student here at Georgetown High School. He was a student athlete, he was an honor student, he was a grandson, he was a nephew, a wonderful friend, and most importantly, he was a brother, little brother, to a Georgetown High School graduate of 2014, Tommy. And he was also the son to Matt and Kelly Coy. As a community, we have vowed to support the Coy family in whatever capacity where needed. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with the family as well as with all the kids in our community that have had to suffer such a tremendous loss to say goodbye to a friend much too soon. As a committee, we would like to thank a few people. First and foremost, we would like to thank Chief Cudmore and the Georgetown Police Department for the support they provided that day. The staff of NEMLEC, who worked with both the staff and the students to ensure their emotional needs were met that day. Superintendent Jacobs.
Thank you.
And to all the administrators and faculty for putting their own grief aside, because I know that must have been very difficult for them to do that. And what they did is they put their own grief aside and they took care of the kids, the students that really needed it. So I want to thank them very much for doing that. And I'm sure that eventually we'll be able to smile again. But my thoughts and prayers go out to the family. And if we could just have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that being said, we can begin the agenda for the evening, which would be the approval of minutes, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of October 23rd, 2014, as well as acceptance of warrants number 19V15, number 18P15, and number 20P15.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We have the student rep, Vanessa.
Hi.
Hi Vanessa.
So next Monday, we start our annual kickoff for the Student Council's Spirit Week. That will run from Monday to the following Wednesday before Thanksgiving, where we'll have our pep rally. We are also, on Saturday, our sports, cross-country, girls soccer, and football, all played very well in each of their events and games. They all did it for our number 26. And also, coming up on Wednesday, Key Club is running an idea for the Veterans Day. Everyone's going to wear red, white, and blue, or jeans for teachers. And we can pay $5 to go to the G.I. Joe Fund, which will be sent off to veterans.
That's nice. That's a district.
It'll be a good...
Jeans for soldiers, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. Sounds like fun. Yeah, that game was great on Saturday. It was a really great game. I'm so happy to hear that we're doing so well in our sports, that they're moving along.
And the cheerleaders raised a lot of money for the Dana-Farber as well.
They did.
Oh, good. And they also did well in their competition.
Yeah, they came in second.
Right. That's great. So they move ahead.
Yep.
Good for them. Well, we have a lot to be proud of.
Absolutely.
Good. Great. And second quarter just started.
Yep.
Good. Thank you. Vanessa. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about any agenda items?
No.
Thank you. We got a superintendent's award?
Yes. So this is actually one of the meetings we love every year, because we get to recognize students. And tonight, we have two groups of students that we're going to talk about. But as you know, every year, I have the pleasure to award superintendent's award. Actually, every district does it across the state. Some of the larger districts have the opportunity to add to award two. But we're small, so we have the opportunity to add one. And so every year, Mr. Umbra and I talk about, you know, how many students, you know, I might want to talk with. It is an academic award, so some places just do who's the top student in the class. That's just how they do it. And that's fine, that's perfectly all right. But that's never how I've been, how I've done it. I've always talked about, you know, the well-rounded student, obviously, some of our top kids in our class. And I included the information on their, from their transcripts, in your packet. I actually, when I met with them, I had a conversation with all of them. And then, when I selected the recipient of this, I went back and met with all of them, so that, you know, they could have an opportunity to hear from me, you know, how impressed I was. And I always ask them, would you have any problem if I, you know, include your transcripts in your list of activities? I obviously wouldn't do it if they were uncomfortable with it. But they always say, oh yes, absolutely. And the reason I do that is so you can just see how competitive these students are. And they aren't just academic students. You can see, they take the most rigorous of courses that we offer, clearly. And, you know, their SAT scores and all of that are all up there. But you can also see how many clubs and activities they're part of, how they volunteer their time, what they like to do in their, you know, their free time. And then I always talk to them about goals and things that they're interested in. And it's just, it's a real treat for me to go over and talk with the students. So, you know, this year, I selected Jennifer Nutter, who's here tonight with her parents. Just for the benefit of the public, I'm going to review what I wrote to you in your notes. Jen is currently tied for first in her class, and she takes a rigorous course schedule, which has included the full complement of advanced placement courses that we offer in Georgetown. Since her freshman year, she has challenged herself with the highest level courses, and as you can see, she is a straight A slash A-plus student. She was a recipient of numerous academic awards in the areas of French, honors Algebra, honors Precalculus, honors Biology, honors U.S. History, honors English, wellness, and research, and she was named Student of the Month four times, in grades nine through 12, sorry, nine through 11. Jen is a member of the Student Council, vice president of the Key Club, president of the National Honor Society, and the Tri-M Music, a member of the Tri-M Music Society, Honor Society. Jen is captain of the varsity softball and swimming teams. She's been a competitive swimmer all her life, and she actually helped start the Georgetown Triton Swim Team Co-op that we now have, which is, which is great for the students. And I know she was very instrumental in that. Also, in that same area of swimming, you know, she also participates in club, club swimming. Her athletics, her athletic skills and leadership skills have earned her recognition with awards such as the Golden Glove Award, the IMX Award, Sportsmanship Award, and the Hardest Worker Award. She also finds time to volunteer her time at the Anna-Jakes Hospital, and she does community service through the club she belongs to at the school, those like the NHS, the Key Club, and the Student Council. Jennifer would like to become a doctor, considering specializing in pathologies or orthopedics, but she hasn't decided that definitely, and that's okay. She will be applying to Union College, the University of Connecticut, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, Duke University, and McGill University. She did tell me Union College is her first choice. In her free time, when she might have any, she likes to spend time with her friends and family, and she said she really enjoys going out to dinner with her friends. So it's my true pleasure to award Jennifer Nutter the superintendent's award. And Jen, you can come on up. Congratulations. Thank you so much. And I'm going to give you this little, this is just a little certificate, you know, for you to hang on your wall, or do whatever you want with it. But I bet you're so proud of her. We are as well. So it really, it was, it really touched my heart to have an opportunity to talk with Jen and to learn so much about what she wants to do with her life. And she's going to change the world, I know that. All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Can we just...
Oh, wait a minute, do you want a little picture? Can you get a little? Yeah, yeah. Come on, let's get a little picture.
Congratulations.
I'm going to take it, so I still want to congratulate you. We'll maybe get into the picture, but we're going to do a picture. Are you dressing for the picture? Okay. Yeah, we just want to say congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, here we go. Wait a minute, her mom wants to take a picture too. Mom, she's going to take a picture. This is not real organization. All right, so I can take it. Michael, you want to come in the back? Okay, we have it good. Very good.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I know. I'm so proud.
Congratulations. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you want to leave, but welcome to stay for as long as you'd like. Okay, so...
I know, I appreciate you including the kids' transcripts in there, because it does, I'm looking, I'm like, A+, 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 A+.
Honors, honors, honors.
Yeah, no, but all, all the ones that you included were very impressive.
Yes. It, I always say, it's one of the hardest decisions, believe it or not, I have to make as a superintendent, because for, for all kinds of reasons, I could give individual students recognition. But, you know, I am, I am confident that, you know, Jennifer is a great choice, and I'm very proud to offer the award to her this year.
And where is Union College?
My top college is in New York.
Okay. Oh, okay. So not too far, but just far enough.
I think it's impressive, and that a bunch of these, it take, there's a whole page of extracurriculars and like other stuff going on. It's a lot going on.
Carol, is that a form that students start filling out when they're freshmen? Which one? The activity form?
The activity form. That's kept in the guidance.
I think they're talking, they're talking about this kind of...
I did that most of my junior year, but you fill out everything from freshman year, so...
Okay, but you don't start in freshman year.
No, that usually gives it your end of your junior year.
Okay, great. It's one of the four forms that you fill out and give to guidance.
Pam's learning all the...
There are all different colors. That's like, normally a color. Okay.
We like it.
You know, and I think, for the benefit of the public, I just want to acknowledge the other candidates who were finalists.
Yes.
Marissa McGrath, Jennifer Magliaccio, is that right? Do you guys...
Magliaccio.
Okay. And Isabel Blough. As I said, all very talented, very impressive young women, who I know have really bright futures.
That's great.
And speaking of bright futures, we have some young people here tonight from DECA. Come on up. They want to make a short presentation, and then we're going to approve their, their trips.
Absolutely.
Great. I like your blazers.
I know, you look so handsome.
Those are very... Even though there was such a thing as... And Lisa Ryer, they're at, oh, there she is, okay. Wanted to make sure Lisa got credit as well.
I'm here, but I'm going to let my students see.
I know, you always do.
I do.
So you can stand or sit, whatever you prefer.
It's very professional-looking.
Everybody looks great.
Get your trophies out, because they like to see the bling. They like to see that you won things.
Oh, look at that. Wow.
Men in white compared.
Very impressive. We ought to take a picture of this. We've got a photo, we can take a picture, so they can email it to me.
Would you mind just telling us what your names are?
Yes, they will do.
I'm Haley.
I'm Michael.
Kyle.
Olivia.
Kelsey.
This is my officer team. So Kyle's the president, and he's going to start the presentation, but I'm just going to take a quick picture, and I'm sort of going to lurk if you have any questions that they can't answer, but they're all very comfortable.
Are you going to tell us how many students are in DECA this year?
I don't think, do we have an exact number? I think it's 39 this year for exact numbers this year.
Do you guys want to smile for the camera?
That's great. Just get used to it.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, yeah, please make sure, make yourself comfortable if you'd like to sit.
So, as Mrs. Ryer introduced me, I'm Kyle Dunleavy. I am the president this year for our 2014-2015 officer team. To my right is Olivia Monroe, our vice president. Next to her is our officer-at-large, Kelsey Howard. Next to me is our treasurer and our webmaster, Michael Kelly, and our secretary, Haley O'Keefe. And then, Mrs. Ryer is our advisor this year. And this picture here was from districts last year at the Fern Croft Hotel in Danbury's. And as you can see, there's a lot of people there. I think we had more members last year than this year, but still going strong this year. So what is DECA? DECA is a career and technical national student organization that brings classroom learning into like real-life scenarios through competitions. And it sort of is, it's a big club of kids who are trying to get an early start in the business world. And it's really just a fun organization of kids competing against each other, trying to win awards. And the more awards you win, and the better you do, the farther you go on. Like, we went to Atlanta this past May, which is really exciting journey, and it was really a fun time. So I'm going to send it over to Olivia for our mission statement.
So we really focus on preparing leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And I know, as a Georgetown senior this year, I'm going to UMass Amherst next year, I just decided. And having all of these experiences, especially with the interviews and the whole process, it's been so life-changing, and I feel so much more prepared because of DECA and everything it's done for me. And I keep trying to get the underclassmen to get into it, because it's just such a great thing that I've done in high school.
And you got into the Eisenberg School of Management.
I'm not, I'm not going into business. I'm going pre-med, but it's helped me so much, even though I'm not going into a business major, everything is a business, so it's really been, it's been so helpful.
That's great.
And I felt that it's helped me a lot.
Right.
And at DECA, especially in Georgetown, we have really high standards. We want these kids to feel like they're in a real-life situation, so we really hold them accountable to deadlines. We want them showing up to meetings, to go to the competitions, and experience everything that they can. And the things that we main stand for are competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork. And we really stress these to the kids, because this is preparing them for their future, and we feel it's really important. So I'm going to pass it over to Kelsey.
So DECA's comprehensive learning program, it integrates into classroom instruction. It applies learning to the DECA process. It connects to business, obviously, and it promotes competition. I brought a few props to show what I... So when you're in a competition, you get a certain number, when you go to districts and states. And when you go in front of a judge, you have to present your idea in front of a judge, and you're competing against, in districts, which is the first round we go to. You're competing against our local schools. This year, we're only competing against four. But last year, it was, I want to say, was it seven or eight? And I won fourth out of eight in the districts. And then I went to states, and I won sixth out of, I want to say, 25 or 30 in states. But I never got the chance to move on to Georgia. But I hope that this year, I'll be able to do that to Disney World. So DECA prepares the next generation to be academically prepared, community-oriented. We are very involved with the community. We were involved with the Donahue Race this year, and we had a lot of people going out running the race, giving water to the runners, professionally responsible. I know, as a student, a senior, I'm going to school for accounting, and my top school's Bentley, and I feel like DECA will definitely help me to get Goodman to go there. It's experienced leaders. I feel like we're all leaders to the community, and we hope that, like Olivia was saying, that I'm the classman will look up to us and want to be in our shoes someday.
Now, DECA has a wide range of competitive events in all different business fields, and it's broken into two main categories. The first category, as you see on this screen, is the role-play and testing stage. And students can choose between this or a written competition. In a role-play scenario, students have between 10 and 20 minutes, 10 and 30 minutes to prepare an event that they just received at the competition, based on their category, and present it in front of a judge. And it ranges from different categories. We have the principal of business events, which are for first-year DECA members. For myself, last year, I participated in the Principles of Finance event. And this year, I'll be competing in the Business Services Marketing event. But they arrange in the individual decision-making events, automotive services, marketing. They go into sports and entertainment. There's a wide range of categories to support all students' interests. Also, students can participate in team events, where they can work with other students and compete as well. The other side to DECA competitions are the written events. So if you don't like something that's so spontaneous, you can prepare a paper or a presentation ahead of time, based on those same categories, and you present that in front of a judge at the competition as well. I'd like to hand over to Haley, our secretary.
Our DECA year is full of many events. And as of October, we started, and we went to Bentley University for our Fall Leadership Conference. And this month is our DECA month, so we're going to do a variety of activities. We had a day where we all wore a DECA T-shirt to show our spirit. We also do DECA Diamonds Unlockers, and we have a variety of other opportunities that we will be able to show our DECA spirit. And our district competition will be in January, and that will be at Merrimack College. And then, after that, the top four from our district will move on to the state competition, and that will be at the Boston Marriott Copley Palace. And then, the top three from the state move on to the international competition, which will be held in Orlando this year. And we all have had great experiences at each of these competitions, and it'll be exciting to see what this year brings.
I'm actually going to show a video from Michael this past May at Atlanta, when he won his award, his second place out of the entire country, so...
Country, yes.
And this took place in the Georgia Dome, so it was pretty impressive.
Oh, my goodness.
There are about 16,000 students at Nationals, about 3,000 at states. So it's quite an experience.
There it is.
Gary Chin, Ontario. Brendan Campbell, Michigan. Avinash Bhorin, Oregon. Kayla Cochin, Missouri. Sanjuli Agawal and Arushi Agawal, Texas. And Claire Hayden, Virginia.
There we go.
There you go.
So Michael has medals. They, a different evening, they do top 10, top three medals. Michael, why don't you say?
So, I'm going to just read it up here.
Stack of medals.
Oh, my Lord.
Got a little hardware.
So this was the first medal from the district's competition, when I won first place in the Principles of Finance event. From there, I moved on to state. And there, I had three medals. First place in my testing event. In state, you do two role-play events, as well as the testing portion. I had got first place in the testing portion, as well as third place in both of my role-plays. And that allowed me to get second, the second-place trophy here, to move on to the international competition. There, at Internationals, I got the first, first, this medal represents moving on to become an international finalist. And these two medals represent being in the top portion for my grouping at Nationals in both my testing and my role-playing. From there, I got this medal, which represents top 10 in the nation. And then I was chosen for second place to receive the trophy.
That's excellent, Michael. That's excellent.
Yeah, good for you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Not going too well right now.
I saw your mother soon after, and she was so proud. Do you remember when I saw you at this...
Good reason to be proud.
She was so proud, it was so nice.
So, while you're working on that, so Lisa, this year, are you, are you looking for judges still?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, because I'm going to do it. But if any of you are interested in being a judge, it's really pretty, it's really pretty fun to do, you know? And if any, you've been on it before, right Pam?
I've done it for three years, yes, and I look forward to a fourth year.
We don't judge the Georgetown students.
Right, we're not allowed to do that, yeah.
But we, but, you know, you go in, they give you a job.
I would be biased.
You literally, you know, you know, fill out your rating sheets, and then they do their magic in terms of... And then, it's been my pleasure, last year I couldn't do it, but I've done it for the last several years. And I, usually Lisa is great about, she invites me to stay, so I get to stay, you know, with the, with the group of kids for the, you know, for the award ceremony, and that is quite an experience. That is quite an experience.
So would we let Lisa know if we were interested in doing that?
Yeah, Lisa, how would you want to do that?
That would be wonderful, if you wouldn't mind emailing me, and we'll put you on the judges list. We need judges for districts, which are January 8th at Merrimack.
Which is in Merrimack.
Right down the street.
Yeah. And also for states, which is in Boston. But you don't come for the three, well, I guess you could come for the three days if you like, but the judges only come on the Friday.
Okay.
And parking is covered. But the interesting thing is, if you go and you do it, then you really understand what DECA is.
Right, yeah.
Do you need judges for Orlando?
Yeah, I'd love it.
Me too. If you don't mind paying for a...
At least you want to be part of the fundraising effort, right?
They're so creative.
Yes, she does, she does do.
And you know who else?
Beth O'Grady.
Beth O'Grady is on it, yes. But, you know, it's...
All right.
Yeah, I'll get her out of there.
We're good.
There's Michael, right there in the middle.
So right now, they're double-calling the events to get the next group of people up in the Principles of Finance event.
... Kelvin E., and Alan Gow, Ontario. Alex LaFortune, Samantha Latour, and Erin Lexenin, Minnesota.
Principles of Finance. We thank series director Carmella Colakior from Connecticut, assisted by Rochelle Queenie.
Now, do you know what, you're waiting to know whether you want...
Right now, I know I'm top 10.
Okay.
Now it's the anticipation of the trophy.
In third place, from Freedom High School in Virginia, Rahul Nantahala. In second place, from Georgetown High School in Massachusetts, Michael Kelly.
All right.
And in first place, from Westford Academy in Massachusetts, Ivar Sheth. Congratulations winners.
That's really great.
Yeah, it was, it was really cool in Atlanta, all the people, and just being inside the Georgia Dome and the atmosphere. And then, when you, there was, I remember opening session. Afterwards, all the different states had different, like, props that they had. I remember Florida had these hats, and Canada had these, like, Canada, except there was like DECA Canada, it was really cool. And people would exchange, like, oh, I'll give you two of my Florida hats or a Canada hat. Exchanging like that, it was really, it was just, it was an awesome experience to be in.
That's what it used to be like when our boys played hockey, you know? That we'd go to these different hockey tournaments, they're all exchanging these pins from their local associations.
The announcer sounds like a Boston Bruins announcer.
You guys are the players. You're not the audience, you're the players.
That's very cool.
That's very exciting.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah. So did we have three go to Atlanta?
Yes, we had Kyle and his partner Luke O'Connell, they went for the stock market game. They got top 25 in the region, and they moved on, as well as myself, and Ryan Mahler.
Oh, I remember.
Moved on as well on his event.
Wow, that's great.
And this video is, we can, I guess I can show you the beginning of this. This is the new campaign for this upcoming year. And, uh, this video is beginning, I guess I can show you the beginning of this. This is, uh, the new campaign for this upcoming year.
I am. I'm innovative.
I am driven. I am involved. I am a student.
I am connected.
I am a leader.
DECA allows you to be professionally prepared. You get an experience in high school that's like you're in an actual job.
We have study sessions in our chapter, seeing really what goes into the competitions and preparation for the students. We all wanna get to ICDC. We're gonna have this amazing experience. We're gonna learn different aspects of the business world. And on top of that, we're gonna make memories that will last a lifetime. I am.
So that was, uh.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
That really is great.
Yeah, that's, I'm pretty sure that's the, uh, new DECA national president this year.
Yeah.
So I think he did that at his, looks like his local high school.
Yeah, that's great.
So, um, thank you again for, um, having us today. We really appreciate the time. And if, uh, you have any questions, feel free to ask any of us.
Just wanna thank you all for coming. I mean, it's really exciting to hear about everything you're doing and, you know, how you're looking forward to the year, the competitions ahead and it's a wonderful thing.
How does one join DECA?
It's a great program.
Um, well, we actually created, Michael created this, uh, website this past year. Uh, GTownDECA dot weebly dot com and you could sign up on that website and he just, he can, he can tell you about it. He knows all about this.
And also you have to, sorry, Michael, but you have to be enrolled in a business class at Georgetown to become, to like become a part of our club.
Do you have to be in honors marketing or something?
Um, I took honors marketing with Ms. Ryer and I'm in entrepreneurship now with Kelsey. But, um, you can take intro to business as a freshman. We have both honors and CP level marketing. We have entrepreneurship, management. We have a lot of classes to offer, so, um, we have a lot of kids that are taking those now. And my sister, who graduated about five years ago, it wasn't as big and it's a really great opportunity.
Oh yeah, it's definitely, I've seen it grow.
Yeah.
Amazingly, which is a great thing for Mrs. Ryer. I think you've done a terrific job. You know, you really have done great with them and I know the kids just really admire you and stuff, so that's, that says a lot for you that, that it's grown so much. So good for you.
Oh, I think Donna McFadden does an amazing job.
Yes, Donna McFadden does, yes.
Yes.
And Donna, I remember her saying to me that she just is so impressed because she said, you know, these young programs, I mean, now we're getting to be a a middle age program, right? We have five or six years or something, right? Um, but when we first started the program and even in the first three years, she said, I, I cannot tell you, you, it just, you don't see it. You don't see this, many kids, you know, placing and, and, uh, being as competitive in the competition because you haven't had that much time to sort of grow the program. But pretty, pretty quickly, um, even, I remember the first year, you know, Georgetown students fared very, very well. And she, I remember her going out of her way to tell me that it just doesn't happen that way most of the time. So, you know.
It's the swell in Georgetown.
I'll buy that. I mean, it must be so neat too to meet so many kids from all over the place, you know? And, and you must learn a lot from them too when you see what they're bringing to the table. So, yeah, that's great.
They develop their social networks and their professional networks.
That's wonderful.
I have a student who's in college now, who still stays in touch with people from Texas that she met at Nationals and, you know, it, it's really a great opportunity for teenagers to have this experience. And I think that they, they do make the most of it.
And they represent us very well every year. We're very proud.
Okay, we used, I think it was you that mentioned the DECA Diamond.
Oh, yeah.
Unlockers, so tell me about that.
We have a DECA Diamond and it pretty much just says that they're a member of DECA and they pretty much just show our spirit.
Okay, so you put it on all the members.
It's like, it's this right here. It's, it kinda shows what DECA is in a lot of the state competitions, like they do the hand things. And we decorate the, um, diamonds to put on the lockers, so, um, each DECA member will have one on their locker and it kinda shows them. Even if they don't play a sport and get a poster for that, like they get their DECA Diamond, which is really cool and shows the whole school how big DECA is, so.
That's good. So how many kids do we have right now?
Approximately thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
We're still waiting for the final people to register, but.
And when's the deadline?
Deadline has passed, but.
You don't turn anyone away, right? You are still open?
Yes.
So you can start as a freshman?
It can start as a freshman if you're in an intro to.
Into a business class. So how does it, how does it break out pretty much for DECA now? Is it mostly juniors and seniors or?
Last year we had a majority of seniors. This year it has sort of averaged out, um, most of the, the members are sophomores and juniors.
Which is great, 'cause then that's how you grow, gonna grow the program. Excellent. That's great. I'm so excited to see you guys come back with some more awards.
Yeah.
We'll have you back again for sure. And maybe they'll all show up to be judges, you never know. Use this as a recruiting opportunity, Mrs. Ryer. Grow our judging club too as well in this town.
Sounds fun. It is fun.
That's fun. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Oh, his bling. Oh yeah, do you wanna do that, Lisa? Well, yeah, we'll do that all.
We're still cleaning up awards. Can you wait a minute, please?
There you go. Thank you, Michael. All right. Very impressive. Thank you. And I couldn't come on Saturday, but I will definitely buy something and credit to your account.
Thank you.
Your email today, maybe they, one, email today said that people could, um, they, they had a fundraiser at the, um,
Barnes and Noble.
Barnes and Noble.
Oh, it's something.
But if, if people, you know, wanna buy something online, we just can, if you need to know about that, you can just let me know, 'cause.
I think it was in the morning announcements too.
Okay, perfect. That's great. So there, there's a certain account number you have to put on there.
And so that money is used for the trips?
Yes, that money will go towards states and it will get credited to the students' accounts to reduce their costs for states. Um, states approximately four hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, so last year we earned eight hundred dollars at Barnes and Noble, so most students had about a seventy-five dollar credit.
Well, that helps.
Which was good. Um, some of the other fundraising we do, like agenda books, um, we're selling page minas. Well, this year they're gonna be infinity scarves. We haven't started that yet, but.
Oh, that sounds like fun. It's exciting.
Um, those more go toward general, um, expenses. For example, our bus to Bentley was four hundred and forty dollars.
Buses are so expensive.
So that was.
And you have to travel by bus?
That's a Mr. Lucia question, I think. But I, I think the short answer is yes.
Is he here?
Yes.
He's trying to get a corner.
Yes.
So, um, and we usually bring other chaperones to states with us because we're required to have, um, only one per ten students. So when we exceed ten, we have to have a second chaperone. Last year, um, I brought two other chaperones with me and, um, we each put some money in toward our room, but basically those expenses also have to be covered by the club, so. It is pricey. I tell students every year to save their money right from the beginning.
Well, it's in, you know, Boston Hotel, right, for three days, so. I mean, it's probably, if you think about it, four hundred dollars probably isn't that expensive, given the fact that you're three days in a pricey hotel. But it is a lot for, for students and families to, to come up with.
Do you have difficulty getting chaperones?
Um, sometimes. In the past, I had used parents and last year not one parent stepped forward. So, um, another teacher came and then a retired teacher.
And this year it looks like you're looking for a parent? Volunteering?
I would like that, yeah, if we could. Um, sometimes it's fun to have parents 'cause they get to experience it, but, um, they see it sort of a different side and they don't really like doing the bed checks so much.
Yeah, that's not really much fun. I'm glad someone does that though.
Okay, so this year it's at the Boston Marriott Copley.
Yep.
And thirty?
That's generally where it is.
Thirty, oh, is it, is it there usually?
Generally it's in Boston, right in the city.
Well, I know it's, is it usually there?
It has been, yes.
Yeah. So thirty students?
Approximately, hopefully. Um, they have to move on, they have to earn their way from their categories from districts. And then they get to move on, so, um, in the past, we've had an approximately seventy percent move on rate from districts to states, um, which we're very proud of. The students work very hard to prepare. Um, so if we have about forty students, I'm being hopeful in bringing thirty to states. But we won't know till after January.
Okay, so Thursday to Saturday. Okay. So you're doing, you're doing both the state and the, the national. Okay, so that's not on April vacation?
We would leave, we would leave the Friday of April vacation.
Okay.
Um, I already know some families are already planning to be in Florida and so they're gonna stay and then meet us there.
The band trip is this year, so.
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, uh, two separate motions?
Yeah, Hope's book fund and the college fund for your kids, right?
Yeah, did you choose, okay. Uh, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the DECA state competition trip to take place from March twelfth, twenty fifteen to March fifteenth, twenty fifteen, at the Boston Marriott Copley as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the DECA national competition trip to take place from April twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, through April twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, to Orlando, Florida as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I look forward to hearing all about the wins that we get.
Thank you.
Just the, just the adventure of it. I think it's just fabulous that they get to do this. It is a big, a big deal.
It is. It's a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you all very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, um, Ms. Christine LaPlaca, Mrs.? Come on up, Christine. That's a hard act to follow.
I know. I have no trophies.
She'll have something, something. No, but this is really interesting. I enjoyed reading this.
You can, um, sample some cookies.
It's close to trophies.
I do love DECA. I'm actually presenting, uh, my business plan to them next week.
Yes.
Because my kids were in DECA and, uh, it's a great program. Love it.
So you remember, if you remember Mary Beth, remember Mary Beth everybody?
Yes, we remember Mary Beth.
This is Mary Beth's mom.
Right.
Of course.
And Rebecca and Caroline as well.
Very good.
And how is Mary Beth doing?
She's great.
Is she doing good?
Yeah, loves it.
Yeah, great. Happy to hear that.
Um, so you have my, my document and, um, I'm hoping to be able to use the, um, the Pearly School, uh, to test market, um, to do the test marketing phase of a business that I'm starting. It's called Rebecca's Nut Free. I actually started it in two thousand and three.
I was gonna say, yeah, definitely. And I'm not a nut-free family, but we used to buy them.
Yeah.
You had them down in Crosby's.
I did, yeah, I did, yes.
They were very good.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, yeah, we were, uh, we were really successful. I had a, a home kitchen and it was licensed through the town. And then I grew too big and so I built a commercial kitchen in Danvers. Ran it for a few years out of there. And then it actually got to the point where I was too big. And so I had to make the decision of, um, I had to go with a distributor. I couldn't go and deliver myself anymore. And, um.
Did the audience cook?
Yep. And, um.
Delicious, thank you.
You're welcome. So I actually put it on hold for a while and, um, now I am restarting, but only with, um, frozen cookie dough, which addresses a lot of the problems that the business had before, the frozen dough.
I think that's becoming very popular. People are so busy.
Right.
That it's just easier to get that, we've talked about it, to just grab it out of your freezer and cook as many as you need instead of like a whole batch and.
Exactly. And it's, um, all natural, uh, which a lot of the products out there are not. And, um, yeah, I, you know, no preservatives, no palm oil, gourmet chocolate.
Delicious. Corn syrup.
No corn syrup.
Okay, so you're gonna be using it one to two days a week?
Right.
Three hours at a time?
Right.
For a max of six hours a week.
Yes.
And then someone, so while you're there, one of our employees has to be there.
That's right.
As well. And that can be worked out fine. There's no issue with that.
Actually, the, the woman from the head cook at Pearly is interested in doing this.
Oh.
So she would work her day and then, and then Chris is gonna try to work it out in such a way that she would just extend her day.
Right, I'll go in at the end of her day, at her Pearly day.
Okay.
But, you know, she's checked us out with the state, with the, um, with the board of health.
So we would, we would pay her for these extra hours?
Well, yes, but out.
Right.
What you're paying us. That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Now, what made you think of Pearly? Or what made you think of a school facility for this?
Good question. Um, so I've been, I've been trying to find a place for a while. Um, and then I just remembered that Pearly was nut-free and it has been for years and years. So I thought, I contacted, um,
Yeah, I talked to you first, yeah.
Carol in the summer and, um, and set up a meeting and talked to her about it and then met with, um, with Heather.
Heather. Yeah, I had to meet with Heather and, um.
And, um, and talked to them about it. And, um, yeah, it's, you know, it's a, a nice kitchen. It's local, it's a community.
We can accommodate the sto-, uh, some of the storage that, um, that she needs. She, she'll bring some of her stuff in as she comes, but there, there'll be some, some part of this, um, kitchen that could be just set up with her, with her things.
Right, as I was reading this, the first thing that came to mind is, oh, deliveries. And then you had said that
No deliveries.
You're not having deliveries there. You will bring all, all your stuff, so you'll get it delivered to your house or however you do that.
Actually, a lot of Costco, a lot of Restaurant Depot.
So you'll just bring it yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, and for, you know, I'm building inventory, so I have a frozen storage facility in Saugus that I'm using to store the cases. So, um, I'm not storing any finished goods at the Pearly School. It's really just for a production.
So you're doing production and packaging?
Yes.
At Pearly and then it goes to Saugus?
That's right.
Straight from Pearly to Saugus?
Right.
So there's no, Pearly staff comes in the next day and they don't know you've been there?
That's right.
We didn't put like a, a period of time necessarily on this. I mean, obviously if it's working well, we know, we would have no reason to discontinue it. But right now Chris is thinking about this from a test marketing point of view. She wants to see whether or not it's gonna be what she hopes it's going to be. So, uh, obviously we have a facility, you know, she's a, a member of the town and, you know, we.
And we don't have any insurance issues or? She has her, she has her insurance.
And she serves safe, certified and.
I actually will put the town of Georgetown as, um, an additional insured on my insurance policy.
Okay.
Is there, assuming you do well and hopefully it succeeds and everything, is there, is there a, if this grows into more hours a week? Issue, like, will that work in terms of scheduling?
Well, we'd have to discuss that. We'd have to.
Right.
I'm just wondering if there's, you know, are we, I just wanna make sure that we know sort of the, hey, it's, it's working, it's great.
Right.
Sort of a next step without kind of going down that road, obviously.
Ideally, my next step will be to build another commercial facility.
That's what she wants to do.
That's what I would want, that's what I want to do. Um, and then get some machines to actually, you know, make a lot of cookies. So that's the plan. That's right. Right.
And she's the, you know, the, uh, appliances she's using are sort of your standard that you'd have in a, in a kitchen. She doesn't have, you know, large appliances.
They're not industrial.
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's it, this, when I saw it, I thought, what an interesting idea for Pearly when, I know we'll have the preschool there, but we won't have this. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm right in the, in imagining that Pearly might seem a little empty.
Right.
It'll seem emptier than it is right now, but.
Yeah, and so it just seemed like a nice way to use a facility.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, Carol mentioned that, um, you know, I guess you, we never know.
Right.
You know.
Right.
If it's income for the town, that's, that's good.
Yeah, it's an interesting idea in terms of producing revenue. Because it's a facility that is already in place, so.
I liked how you incorporated the decor into it too though.
Yeah.
For them to actually see of our business, how it.
Cause it's really, it's a very interesting, um, business for kids. I mean, they understand the whole allergy thing. They've been living with it for a long time. They like cookies, so they, you know, they buy things in grocery stores. So it's really something easy for them to wrap their head around.
Right.
And I know I use. And I know I use my children all the time for, um, social media, you know, I'm like, okay, should I be Instagramming or tweeting or? And they kind of roll their eyes and then tell me what I should be doing. And, um, so it's, you know, they're my target audience.
Right.
So it's, you know, it'll be, if they have any, you know, any, uh, ideas for me, it'd be great. But, um, you know, it's kind of interesting to hear a business plan and then I'll present to them regularly. And, um, you know, see how things change, how, you know, things always take a little bit longer than you think they're going to. But it's interesting, you know.
Well, I think your brand already has been established in Georgetown because I remember from back in oh-three.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
But look at the pa- can you show them the packaging that you, the packaging that you've got that you're?
The new, the one of, yeah. Well, Nestle just came out in October. Um, you know, Nestle is the king of refrigerated horrible cookie dough.
Who did they call it that?
I, I know, people like it, I do. But they just came out.
You are on television.
They forgot about that, thank you. Uh, they just came out with, um, in October with, uh, the Cookie Pucks in the freezer, which is a whole new kind of paradigm for dough. Dough is always refrigerated. And so that, I was thrilled because it, because mine is gonna be in the freezer because it doesn't have preservatives, as it also does not. Um, it has longer shelf life in the freezer, um, actually up to a year in the freezer, which is great. So I'm actually gonna be doing this exact same, um, size pouch and, um.
It's sixteen. I always get it wrong, sixteen or eighteen cookie.
Yeah, sixteen, uh, three-quarter ounce Cookie Pucks that, um, will go in here. And, uh, yeah, Rebecca, my daughter, who, um, she's studying graphic design at University of Delaware. She got the superintendent's award.
Yes, she did. Yes, she did.
I was so happy for her.
I'm so happy to give it to her too.
She's do, she's designing my packaging, which is great for her portfolio.
So you named it after her?
I did. She has an exquisite nut allergy, yeah.
Exquisite.
She's only had one reaction in her life.
Yeah. But have you ever thought about, um, like, the PTA does that fundraiser where they have, you know, yeah, the Otis Spunk Meyer.
Yes, I have actually thought of, you know, piggybacking, not doing it maybe totally on my own. But if, you know, someone does an Otis Spunk Meyer, if they'd wanna offer a nut-free arm to it, you know.
Yeah, because there are so many allergies.
Minimums or they wouldn't have to, you know, buy thirty cases or anything. It could be something small. That would be another great way to get my, um, name out to the target.
Absolutely. And they are gonna do that this year. Remember, when they came, they, they came before the committee and they are gonna do that, so.
Yeah.
I could give you a name of someone that you can check.
Okay, which club is doing that?
PTA.
The PTA. Okay, yeah. And even DECA, if they wanted to do it.
That's right. That'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And I know Sabra Dow of Girls Inc., she has a middle school girls', um, program, after-school program here. And she's looking for, uh, women entrepreneurs to have the girls speak with.
Oh, really?
About their business and their business plan. I don't know if you might be open to that.
I'd be happy to do it, sure. Sure.
Cause she just asked me about women entrepreneurs.
Okay.
Other idea.
Yeah.
So if this gets approved, then, um, Chris would like to start, obviously, fairly soon.
Sure.
So, you know, we thought maybe by the end of November?
Yes, sure. Well, I have to apply for the license and the state, they'll take up to a month.
Oh, okay.
To schedule.
Yeah, so it might be the end of November, beginning of December. Okay. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the use of the Pearly Kitchen by Mrs. Christine LaPlaca for six hours per week as presented.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion? I have one question. Would they, would she come back if we have to add from six hours to?
We have to increase the hours?
Yeah, would she come, would the committee need to?
I think that's probably an operations issue. I don't think you'd have to do that, but I certainly would notify you, but. I think that's probably something she can arrange with us.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I look forward to hearing how well it does. I'm sure it's gonna do great.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The cookies are delicious.
Oh, thank you, very much. All right.
It's the third time I've had them.
Say hi to Mary Beth.
She brings them to every meeting. It's a secret, wasn't it?
Do you just schedule meetings for cookies?
Well, I must say, it's, it's a nice perk.
Effective marketing tool.
Superintendent's report?
No superintendent's report.
School reports, school improvement plan.
Mr. Lucius coming up. He's got two reports, actually.
Are you plugging in?
The crowd is dwindling.
I've been sugar for you for a couple months now.
I'm trying to stick to it.
Funny in the may.
It's sport like that.
Let's see how much longer. Please till Christmas.
Oh, there you go. This is a tough time you gotta do this.
Right, that's why. Only till the holidays hit.
It's not my, uh.
It's extended instead of.
I'm not a sugar person, no. I'm soft.
Oh, you wanna do, change that?
Chips, yeah.
My gloves?
Mike responded. He said the boiler's gone.
Get someone to come fix it. I said, hopefully we won't be here that much longer.
Peter, you're gonna have to talk fast.
I will.
Before we turn to icicles.
I know the freezer needs to be replaced. We're gonna have to have a special town meeting to replace them.
Actually came back, so I turned it back up.
Okay.
We'll see if it works.
Can't feel it.
I'm not sure it's gonna work.
Nothing else makes you feel better when you can hit up a few times.
You put it up to like eighty?
It's seventy-two.
That should, that should be warm enough. It was working.
Wow.
Michael Kelly's day. He is a whiz with technology.
They figure that out all the time.
I'll always go ahead over to the other screen.
Okay.
I'm in Teddy, Massachusetts.
I know, Teddy, too.
How you do that?
Teddy, Teddy, we wrote a grant, right? Teddy had that down to, for, to upgrade the, um.
Sound system right in the auditorium.
It's his science, like.
It's unbelievable. He worked, we need that so badly.
So hard on that and.
There it is.
Well, he's, he's, we applied, I had to sign it.
All right, Plan B.
There you go. Perfect.
Did you enjoy it?
Interesting. Okay. It's not.
Wow, this is.
It'll be trouble.
What are you in trouble about, like?
Well, that's not what I'm seeing.
That's not what you're seeing?
No, that's a different one.
Well, we, we have it, right? I recall the goal. Oh, yeah, that's different.
If you can't get enough, if we could provide you a copy of it, just so you can read along with us. Do we have an extra copy that?
Oh, I have it. No, I have it. I, I just, I can't. It's not showing on the projector what's on my screen. It's a different presentation, so.
I mean, we have it all in front of us.
It looks like a similar presentation. Maybe you could just adapt it.
Okay, I think we got it. Yep.
There you go.
Hey, that's it. All right.
You got it?
Excellent, yep. Closer. Okay, here we go.
Okay, go ahead. Here we go.
It's nice when things work.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the school improvement plan for, um, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen year? Do that one first since it took us so much time to get it up there. Okay, would you like me to just go through the goals or do you want me to talk about, um, last year's plan or?
No.
Your call. Okay.
I'd like you to go through the goals.
Okay. Um, there are five goals this year. The first one is to adopt and implement an advisory program for, um, Georgetown Middle High School. Uh, this is year two of a, of a two-year goal. We kind of put it on ice a little bit last year, um, when we, uh, had a administrative reorganization. So, uh, the, the, uh, the source behind this is, is twofold, one in the high school and one in the middle school. Um, NEASC is, uh, has a standard under culture and leadership about a formal program where kids can connect with adults that aren't their counselors. It has been a big source of discontent with member schools for a long time. And, um, they are currently in the process of changing this standard. So, um, the, there are, there are two, um, ways to go with this, either to have an advisory program, or we've never felt that we needed one in the high school because of the size of our school and all of the other things that we do in the process that we have to accomplish this. And it was good for them ten years ago and they really tightened up. They wanted a more formal advisory program. And now they've gotten so much pushback from member schools that they're, um, mellowing on this a little bit. So if you look at the bottom, under the asterisk, it talks about process of processes in place of that. And so we, we have one. I'm going to a conference in early December with NEASC and I'm gonna talk to them about what we do and then come back to the faculty and make a decision about how we wanna proceed with that. So I am mentioning that because we, we may decide to adopt our, our process instead. In our process, um, actually, we're gonna expand upon it. What we do is we put up every kid's name in the high school in the teacher's, um, room. And teachers, uh, go through that and they put a star next to, uh, each person that they feel that they have a relationship with, where they could actually write them a college recommendation if they need to. So that's how well they know, um, the student. And that's what we've been using. So then that allows us to identify the, um, the students that don't have a lot of stars or don't have any. And then we, we intervene. And so the, the next step that we wanna go, we, we thought, you know what? That's great for the teacher's end. So that is the teacher's opinion, but what really matters is the students. So we're gonna kind of do a reverse, um, stars chart this year, um, where we're gonna poll the kids and then put that data together. So, um, that is the, we haven't gone the, the second step yet, but we have been using the first. And because of the, the, um, amount of kids that are doing extracurricular activities, et cetera, um, we, we may feel that we don't need an advisory program. And I know it, it's a little different, but, um, that's a conversation we'll have with the, um, with the faculty. So right now, the plan is calling for one in both schools. We definitely, uh, wanna have one in the middle school. Uh, my next presentation is about the NELMS assessment and that's pretty much the major finding that they had. So we're very excited about that and, and moving forward with that. So, um, the goal is to have these in place by next September.
Okay, so I have a question for you. When you say that you then intervene if there is a child that you notice has few stars, possibly none.
Yep.
So what would you do to intervene? Do you have teachers that will say, oh, I can take, you know, I can?
Yeah, we make, we try to make, develop connections with them. We talk, we, we talk about, um, that student at our, um, student assistance team and they have a, of, you know, a vast menu of, um, different interventions depending upon the needs of the child. But we, the whole idea is for them to make some connections with some adults that aren't their counselors, so that's what we try to do.
And how is that reverse stars program going to work? Where the students get to?
Well, we're gonna match the data.
I mean, so you're, are you polling the students or?
But what if a student says that I don't really know any teacher well enough? I, I would be uncomfortable asking any teacher for a recommendation.
I don't know if we're gonna word it that way.
Right.
Um, we might just put the standard out there.
How would you word it?
We'll make, or we might ask them if they, they, they feel that they have a connection with an adult that. The, the standard is that you have to have a connection with an adult that will help you achieve the student expectations for learning. So we'll probably word it something like that and then make connections.
But, but that's like, you know, you want the student to know you're, you're looking for a relationship that's above and beyond just teacher. I mean, obviously, teacher is supposed to help student.
An adult. It doesn't have to be a teacher.
Doesn't have to be a teacher, but it can be a teacher.
That's why coaches and advisors.
But I would want you to, you know, somehow really communicate to the student what you're looking for because I'm worried about those students that really don't have that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we are, yep.
Peter, I mean, we, I think that there's, that idea that there's, um, the standard for student learning is something that is a, is terminology that I think the teachers and the staff may be very familiar with, but students may not be so familiar with. What does that mean, the standard for learning?
Oh, they know that. That's, that's a mission and expectation.
Vanessa, do you, would you know that if we asked you?
If you ask, was there something?
Don't put you on the spot, but.
Go ahead. Be honest.
I don't know what that is.
No? Are you talking about the mission statement, Peter?
Yes, the expectations of stu-
Yeah, that's posted over.
So do you know, so, and again, this is just an idea. I don't know how we'll word that yet. Yeah. So, um, we'll figure it out. We'll come up with some, some words that everyone understands. And we'll certainly, we'll have, we'll probably do this through the student council. So.
Which is great.
Yeah, that and, so they will help us with, you know, what they understand.
Cause we see, we see the mission statement everywhere and like teachers have to have, they put, um, they connect every lesson to a certain thing that they're doing onto the mission statements. Like, it is known, it's just, it's not memorized. Like, if you ask me to say something, I don't know, off the top of my head.
I think the, the intersection of those two lists, for me, would kind of be the most interesting part of, of seeing when a given student has the same connection with the adult. And to see if that same adult has, thinks they have the same connection with the student and, and vice versa.
Yep.
I think that's a really telling.
And then, and then why, if there's a disconnect, why?
Right, exactly.
And what we can do to, so we can get a lot of data from this.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I.
It's gonna happen. You know, I, I like the idea that you're calling it a, a process and that it's gonna really happen. I'm not so crazy about the idea of, of dismissing an advisory program. And I understand the difficulties that, you know, a lot of schools are seeing in, in implementing it. But the process, whatever it may be, is really critical, so I hope that stays in the forefront as a priority.
Well, one of the things that, at your conference, that, I mean, usually at these conferences, they'll have examples of districts who will speak about how they've done certain programs.
Right.
Peter belongs to a professional organization, you know, those, I mean, they all have to do this. So I'm sure there are a lot of good ideas out there that, that Peter.
Well, it sounds like you have a, and what you might think of as an advisory program, or at least half of one. Like, the fact that it's, it's a community practice for faculty and staff to engage with the students in a supportive way that helps them to achieve the goals of education and for, and for you to monitor whether that is indeed happening. That is a program, to me. So if you're thinking about, if advisory program means advisory period, where you come together with a group of students and you've got one teacher who's your advisor, I, I don't know if you have something like that or not. Is that, that's what you're trying to stay away from, is taking a block of time out of the weekly schedule where?
I honestly, I think it, it has to be something that the faculty really embraces.
Absolutely.
And the, the kids have to also.
Absolutely.
And I think what schools have, I mean, it's, it's, it meets with various degrees of success at different schools. So I, I think we, we still wanna explore, you know, what works best for Georgetown.
I mean, what I, what came up for me when I was reading this was like, that was the biggest waste of my time when I was in high school, was that advisory period. Nobody talked to the teacher. She didn't talk to us. She took roll call and everybody felt was disenfranchised, like no, there was no connection. So, so I wouldn't wanna see that recreated in Georgetown. I would, I, everything I've ever heard you say is about fostering, um, connection with students. And, and I do think, like, we see plenty of evidence over and over again of the students that that's working for. And I, I think since I've been on this committee, I've been saying, so where are the students that it's not working for? And what happens to those students? Cause I can't believe we don't have any students like that. Cause I can't believe we don't have any students like that, like, and.
We do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so that's always the question, is like, how to, I mean, I, I think in my high school experience, I don't, I could've gone to a faculty member for a lot of recommendation, but if there was something, um, that I think would've been a little bit more personal, or, you know, if I had been on the verge of dropping out, say, and didn't know who to turn to, I, I wouldn't have had anyone, and I think that's more of what we're looking for. I mean, we, yeah, we want those students, there's some who are just going to excel there. You look at them, they're in DECA, they're getting the superintendent's award, they clearly know how to make relations, connections with adults. Um, but what about the ones that don't? And, and what are we doing to make sure we're, have a safety net under those students?
Well, it was interesting, cause I was telling Peter about this, I, you know, when I, when I talk with the, the folks for, that I look at for this award, I always ask them, so what are, you know, now you've been here for X amount of years, you know, what, what do you think we've done well? To, what have we done to sort of help you feel like you're, this has been a great experience for you, that going forward, you know where you, and I always ask them, and what, you know, you're going out the door now, if you could've changed anything, or you could've made anything better, what would that be? And it was very interesting, cause the, the kids I talk to always say, I couldn't change anything about my education. I feel like I've taken advantage, I've had all these opportunities. The best thing about it is, um, the teachers and the students and the, the close relationships that they build. Every year I hear the same thing there. But this year, I was telling Peter, there was one interesting comment, and it was, um, you know, I wouldn't change anything about my education, but I, I sometimes wonder about the, the students who, you know, don't ha- have all the great things and maybe the classes that we take, and the variety that we take, and the kind of experiences we have in class. Because, you know, when you're an honors student, you know, you, the depth of the projects and the depth of thinking is different than when you're, you know, trying to get through high school. So that was something that, you know, I thought was an interesting and pretty insightful comment. Like, they wanna make sure that all of the kids in the school have the opportunity to have an experience like they have. Now, of course, that has to do with people taking advantage of it as well. But the question, I thought that was worth thinking about that from the kid's perspective. You know, what would, what would we like to see?
My sense is that there's kids who get into high school who don't know, they just don't know how to take advantage of what's available, or they don't know how to forge those kinds of relationships, because that hasn't been modeled to them. So plenty of, there's plenty of young adults in our community who clearly understand that adults are there for them to help them and support them, and they know how to reach out and access that. But I'll bet there is a good number of students in this community who've never really had supportive adults. That's not what's modeled to them in the home. And so they don't have a level of trust in the, in the adults that they see. And in fact, they might be rebellious, and they might be resistant to anybody, because they don't, they don't know it from having grown up in maybe a stable household environment, or all kinds of things, you just, so, so what can a school do? I think that's more the question, to be there for those students who, who really, you know, on some level are a little checked out, and it probably has a lot to do with their inability to feel that adults are trustworthy.
Or that they, how do they get, be successful?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the goal.
Right.
Right, is to, to kinda gather data, to explore it, to put something together if needs to be, even if it's for a smaller group of, of students, you know, just don't know.
Right.
But the middle school one, definitely, we're studying that, and we're.
I can't wait to hear about that, I'm, I'm holding on like to, everything applies to middle school as well, probably, like, but I know we're getting to that, so.
Okay, so that's goal one.
Yep, okay, so goal two is to develop, adopt, and implement analytic rubrics to support and measure progress toward achieving the twenty-first century learning expectations for our new, uh, statement of core values and beliefs. Um, they are written, they are out, we've done the PD, we're almost done this one. It's now, we have to figure out how we're gonna report progress out to, uh, students and parents, and, um, go through the process of, uh, developing measurements for these by individual teachers. The third goal is to increase the middle school's progress toward narrowing the proficiency gaps, um, to seventy-five. This is a two-year goal, by June of two thousand and seventeen. Um, the, simply put, the middle school student growth percentile is below target considerably. And we wanna cut that in half this year, and then get to our target of seventy-five by June of two thousand and seventeen. Um, the fourth goal.
And Peter, do you think that that is a realistic way of looking at it? Like, do you think that that's something that can?
I don't, I, there's, it baffles me why we're not there already.
Me also.
Um, I go into so many classes, I see excellent teaching. I know that we've had, um, a, a lot of, um, uh, change in curriculum up there. So I really do think that it's a curriculum issue, I mean, math is the perfect example. And I think that we're, um, we're fixing that. And, uh, I think that we, um, have some other strategies. I think we look at data more closely than we have in the past. And personally, I think, I mean, you, we can write all of these goals and action plans, but there is a bottom line to get there, and the bottom line is to get more kids to answer more questions correctly. And the best way to do that is to look at their past MCAS scores, uh, tests, and pick it apart, and really almost come up with an individual plan for each kid. And, uh, I think we're moving toward that more. I think in the past, we've, we've looked at data more as, uh, by grade, and then, you know, keep looking at, well, this is what seventh graders do, but you have a new group every year. So, um, I think we're, we're, we're focusing on, um, breaking down the data better. And, um, then it's just, as, as long as we have our curriculum in order, uh, you know, we can focus on, you know, teaching strategies to, to help improve that, so. I, I think, I, I really don't see that, uh, the reasons why we shouldn't get there.
Well, the individualized plan is a great idea, but realistically, how can we do everything that we have to do as teachers?
You get patents and trends.
Yeah. No, I, no, I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, but I still think that it's just, the middle school baffles me, it does, and it concerns me. Um, having two middle schoolers, one, you know, in eighth grade now, and, and I'm, you know, and one's in tenth grade, and it baffled me back then. So I'm just, I just feel for the parents that, I feel for me, but I also feel for the parents that are going there, going to that level, because I do think we have the staff that can handle it. But I don't know what, I don't know.
I intern for a program, uh, for the seventh grade math class with Mrs. Hesak right now, and, um, they do have this program that they're using on the iPads, I think it was, or the Netbooks.
Yeah.
Um, that's having them, if they get a certain amount wrong on the section of math that they're chosen to do for that day, then they have to go and they'll, the program will keep repeating s- those type of prog- uh, problems for them.
For the ones they're getting wrong, so repetitive.
Um, so if they don't know how to do it, they get extra practice at it, and I'm, I go around and like, I help them with which specific thing they have to get done. I wanna be a math teacher, so like, I have interest in it. Um, but it, I definitely see like improvement in the kids, but there are definitely areas where you see a pattern in what the kids are doing wrong.
So is that a regular class, or is that an enhancement class?
This is an enhancement class, um, but I know, like, some kids like come in as the quarter changes and stuff like that.
So we've just purchased some iPads to, to you, I think that, uh, the more technology we use is gonna help also.
We can access things like Khan Academy, there's a number of programs that we're able to access by doing these iPads. That's why we purchase them for the enhancement kids. But I think, I think, to answer your question, Barbie, a little bit, is I think, wh- wh- when Peter talks about it, an individualized plan for people, he's not necessarily talking about the kids that are in proficient advance. He's talking about that group of, of kids that are, needs improvement or below. And, you know, we're talk, we're doing RTI, so, you know, there's three levels for some of those students that they have to get, you know, that they go through. Um, the secret is, as he said, get the curriculum very tight. Uh, make sure that when we do interventions, that it's the right intervention, not just more time on something. Vanessa's giving you an example of one of the things that is, that we're doing now that we've never done before, so.
I'm just, just curious, so as you, as you do this, cause I'm gonna assume that kids that fall into the category of needs improvement are below. Some of them may be on IEPs, but, but many of them may not be.
That's true.
And my understanding is if a student is on an IEP, then the parent is informed of what steps are being taken in the school to address the student's learning needs. But say you have a student who's not on an IEP, and they're struggling in a, in an area, math, whatever it may be, do we have a system in place for letting parents know what's going on?
We always like to have good communication with parents, so when someone's struggling, the teacher would contact the parent.
And of course, they have headline, right? So they can be checking that on a regular basis.
Not there yet, so I don't.
Um, and some teachers have, there's the NHS tutoring program, which, if, depending on the subject, the parents will be contacted, or the parents will want their student to get like an extra help from maybe a high school student in the NHS program. Um, I know, like, there's always, people are asking like, oh, who can tutor for this? And people will just sign up to do it, and, um, they tend to choose their subjects that they're strongest at. And it's both for high school and middle school.
That's a wonderful resource, it really is.
That's great.
And it's like council's community service for the high schoolers, so it's easy for us to get it done.
And that's why we're focusing, uh, uh, in the next several years on RTI, because that's a regular education initiative.
Right.
In fact, we just did a training with the elementary staff, cause we're starting it at the elementary staff first. And, um, you know, it was very interesting to see how the teachers were receiving that, and I think they really, they really appreciated, you know, getting, having the opportunity to get together and sort of build their repertoire of strategies. And the message that the consultant that we're working with made very clear is that tier one and tier two are the teacher's responsibility. Now, there can be strategies and ways for, you know, uh, three times a week to have intervention groups where, you know, different teachers work with different, different students. There's all kinds of ways to do it, there's not a right way to do it. But I think sometimes we get caught up in, if kids need extra help, then they have to have an IEP. And that, that's where we're trying to, you know, dismantle that myth, because that isn't necessarily the case. You know, we.
Some kids just get hung up.
So we have enriched, we have an enhancement, which is one intervention strategy. We have the NHS tutoring, that's another intervention strategy. Now we're focusing also on looking at what are the interventions that we want, that we know are research-based that are effective. Like Margaret asked me the other day, we've been talking about this program's sort of success. And, you know, it, it's, it's to help students with, with reading. But if that's one of the interventions we use for certain, kids with certain prob-, you know, challenges or weaknesses, then that's a, a way to fill gaps.
Sure.
But we just don't wanna have a willy-nilly approach to it. We wanna be very clear on what the interventions are that we're looking to do.
Sure, sure.
Can I, before we move on, um, I guess, being, being new onto the committee, what is, what is, what does the seventy-five mean? I guess I'm gonna have three parts to this question. What does the seventy-five mean? Where are we now? And is seventy-five a good score, or is seventy-five, uh, an incremental score where we're moving?
Seventy-five is, is a growth percentile, and it's, it's not, every, it depends where you are, uh, with regard to where you have to go. So, um, we're at forty-nine, I believe, now. So i- if we got to seventy-five, it's gonna be a level-one school, so it's, it's not, I don't know how to explain that, it's not like, uh, each district, like, where we are right now, there are level-one schools that are at twenty-eight. It depend, it's all based on where you have to go.
It's based on how, how effectively you're narrowing the gap. So if you're a higher-performing district, that's harder for you to get that recognition. And it is kind of hard for people to wrap their arms around, cause it's like, well, there should be a certain place you get.
And that's a good score.
But, but really, the emphasis in, in the state of Massachusetts right now is a combination of, of proficiency or, or performance with student growth.
Right.
So what we look at, when we look at the MCAS, we, we do look at the percentage of, of the kids in the top two categories and the kids in the bottom two categories. But we also look at the student growth percentile. So if you've got a student who's, you know, let's say, in, needs improvement, but their student growth percentile is sixty, so you gotta decide, you know, is what we're do, is what's happening for that student good, and we just need to do more of it? Um, you know, we also have students who will be, you know, in the warning, and they make five percent growth. Those are the kids, we need some significant intervention, different than what we're doing. So it is like Barbie said, it's complicated, it's not an exact science, but we know more about the student's performance than we, we've ever known before.
Right.
Okay, uh, the fourth goal is, uh, by the end of the year, to have all educators, um, to develop, uh, district determ, two district determined measures. This is part of the new educator evaluation system. And it, it's the part that rates your impact on student learning. So, uh, we are required to, uh, develop these and gather data and monitor student growth, which will give us an idea about what our impact is on student learning. And the final goal is a technology goal, and by the end of two thousand and fifteen, all teachers and administrators will integrate the use of notebook computers into their daily practice. And as you can see, that I'm still working on, on that goal, with, with regard to this particular, uh, piece. So this is actually what we wound up getting, and I think we're moving along, uh, very rapidly with this. So they're all out, everyone has them.
Policy tonight, roughly.
Yep, they just wanna take them home. Hopefully, that you'll give them the blessing tonight, uh.
And so is the reason they wanna take it home was just to like, you know, navigate around it and get, because I don't know, I'm a Mac person. I mean, not a Mac person, I don't, like, I wouldn't know, my whole family uses those, and I'm.
Part of it, Barbie, but I think it's also, they, they wanna integrate, use their, use the computer, do their lesson plans, software. A lot of teachers work at night.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Can they, do they, do students submit work online? So you can correct student work online? I mean, e- everything is online, there's so much, yeah, teacher's work doesn't end at the end of the school day. And it, once it's on your computer, that's, God, I just remember, I probably still have those, you know, three and a half inch floppy disks on everything. Carrying home, and then, oh my God, it doesn't work on my home computer, and it's just all those nightmares, it's so nice.
Okay, so that's it.
That's it.
That's it for, that's, that's, that's this report, now let's move on to this.
Do you get a vote on this, or do they vote on this?
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, they do. The, um, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen Georgetown Middle High School, school improvement plan as presented by Principal Peter Lusha. So move. Second, any more questions? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just need to find the other one, and we'll, good.
I must admit, I was, I think I was expecting to see more than this, more, more meat to this report.
I thought so too, I'm like, okay.
This one?
I have the NELMS, the NELMS one.
They, they have some good suggestions here, but I think we're aware of a lot of them already. I mean, we, we know that.
We spent a lot of money for this assessment.
I don't think we spent a lot.
Well, let, let me, uh, try to explain some of that.
I'm sorry, we're drawing conclusions before you said a word.
The assessment is based on the principles of, uh, a, a, a group of work, a collection of work that's in a book called Turning Points Two Thousand. And it is probably the foremost, um, And it is probably the foremost, um, piece of work on middle-level education. So, um, they do two types of assessments. They didn't do a full assessment for us, because we already, um, were doing a lot of things, and we have a lot of elements in place that typical middle schools do. So they came in and they looked at a couple areas. So as I go through this report, um, they made some comments on some of the areas, um, or i- it's kind of like NEAS, some of the standards, um, that we did not ask them to really focus on, and then they make recommendations for the areas that they focused on. So, um, that may be a reason why it doesn't have as much meat as you would expect. So one of the areas is that we didn't ask them to focus on was curriculum and assessment. And, and this report, they talk about, um, they pull out some, some, uh, some standards out of, um, um, turning points, and that's, that's kind of the standard. So, uh, in terms of curriculum assessment, uh, some of the comments that they made, that, um, you know, the teams, we, we have a teaming system. They were, they've, they're working on curriculum, they're working on MCAS analysis, DDMs, and they look at our long block as an advantage in our current schedule. With regard to instruction, um, they thought that, um, again, it wasn't an area that we asked them to come in and focus on, um, but they did, uh, recommend that we find a way to allow access to the library more, um, to support instruction. And under the current model now, uh, it's, it's pretty limited. They also talked about, um, looking at how we can fit an advisory program in our schedule. Uh, the next area was, uh, govern democratically, and they found that the administrators are active, engaged, and considered accessible by faculty, students, and staff. And, uh, that we're all eager to transition into a seven and eight middle-level model. That, uh, we, it, the, the leadership is collaborative, uh, and, you know, through the processes that we use with our team leader meetings, and the team model, that everyone has an opportunity to, um, have some input into decision-making. And, uh, they think that we should enhance, uh, a support for middle-level concepts and communications with parents and communities, um, to, to beef up that area a little bit.
Do they, do they offer you, or do these books offer ideas on how to go about that? I mean, there's the recommendation, enhance support of the concept of middle school with parents in the community. Do they tell you, well, how do you do that?
Well, what they do is that, yeah, they give us a bunch of literature to, uh, to use as reference, but they encourage us to go and, uh, visit model middle schools, modeling their eyes, and that's our plan.
Okay. Can we as a committee do that?
Can you?
Can we go to a model school? And tour it, and do it?
We'd have to make arrangements with the school. It's not usually done, but you could do, I mean, you could just make arrangements to.
You could give us a list of which schools are considered.
You know, I mean, we just approved of your school improvement plan, but I didn't see that in here. Am I, did I overlook it, or the, the visiting model middle schools?
No. Well, it's part of the advisory goal.
Part of the advisory. Okay.
Yeah, and the action plan and the advisory goal is to go and, uh, go visit some.
And are there, are they in, on the North Shore of Massachusetts, these model schools, do they exist?
She doesn't give us the list yet, but one of them, she keeps talking about is not close.
No. Well, I don't know, I, I think there are, there are a lot of schools, middle schools, that use Turning Points principles. It, as Peter said, it is, you know, the.
The standard, right.
Yeah, they, most of them do.
And so this, this is a, this is something that will happen this year, before we move to the seventh, eighth grade?
For the advisory model, yeah.
Model, what, I mean, whatever that is, so, so.
And we'll pick up other ideas, like the last time we did this, we came back with student-led conferences and stuff like that. So we, you know, we like to always pick up best practices.
Yeah, I just would imagine that there's some kind of a, you know, a process, you, you go out, you see a best practice, you think, we could do this at our school, and then you need to implement that practice, and it doesn't happen the next day, you have to, it, there maybe has to be some professional development around it. There has to be some consensus, some adjustment, so do you have a sense of timeline of how this is gonna happen?
Again, um, we're gonna start very quickly, within the next week or two to, um, so NELMs came today and presented this to the faculty, and then afterwards, I told them that we're gonna put a, a committee together, and we're looking for volunteers, and we're gonna get right out there.
Oh, great.
Well, and we, and we are gonna work with NELMs on how to, how to work, get an advisory program going.
Yeah, they're gonna come, they're, they're gonna come the next two half days.
Days, yeah, so we're actually gonna be working.
That's, that's really what I wanna know, is how is this getting implemented? What, what is in place to support these things, these changes that we, we identify, we have this need?
Yeah, we, we have a lot of things we wanna do, and we, we, we wanna, uh, talk to KIEB too.
Sure.
And talk about how we can take, uh, some of what they have to offer and tie it into our advisory program. So we, there's, there's lots to do.
I mean, the, the, one of the things we, we investigated briefly was, um, looking at this, um, developmental designs, which is the middle school sequel to Responsive Classroom. It's very expensive, but it's, it's the, it's the sequel to Responsive Classroom, it's the circle of power and respect, and it's very ti- very tied right into middle school. As I said, you know, Peter and I, and Julie, and we, we, we actually had the consultant, we did a conference call, um, you know, and, uh.
Well, and I think it also offers continuity, right, for the students coming out of Penbrook.
Component of their, of their program. So we, we don't rule that out, we're just saying that, you know, that's one of the things that's already started to sort of identify what are those programs out there that, um.
Great.
Of what they recommend is not to buy, not to have a canned program like that, to develop one that fits your, your needs.
Sure, sure.
But a lot of districts, if they have the need, and they have a program in place, and this is, this, you know, is a sequel that goes through, Responsive Classroom is not a prescriptive program. It's based around a series of principles, same concept with this developmental design. But they do have an advisory component, so they say, one of the things you need to be doing is advisory. And they actually have a whole book of ideas for advisory.
How to do advisory, yeah.
Yeah, so that's just one example, there, there are others out there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
The only thing that concerns me is when you said, we have a lot to do, and I agree, we do. And I'm just thinking that, do we have so much to do that we're doing all these things, but we're not seeing, we're not going the full?
Losing sight of.
Yeah, that we're not going where we need to go with it, because there's so many things, so we're focusing on this, and then all of a sudden, we've, we find, okay, we gotta focus on this, because I know I've mentioned in a couple of meetings that this program I've been hearing about for a couple of years.
The advisory?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it just seems like.
Yeah, you have.
I know, and so that's why I, it just seems like.
But that's one of the major goals, you know, we have to do curriculum, right, we have to, we have to adjust the curriculum. But that's more tweaking than it is major overhaul, because we've been working on the standards for a number of years now.
Right.
Um, this intervention is definitely something new, but not something that's, um, not needed. And then this advisory is, for the middle school, the advisory is a significant discussion. So we have, we haven't even started really with it Barbie, so we've talked about it for two years, but it's not like we started it and stopped it and started and stopped it. We just haven't done anything with it.
I just wonder, would we be looking at it if it wasn't in this report, saying, I, I, well, I sincerely hope so.
We absolutely would.
I look at this and I say, are we doing this because we think it's gonna help the kids? Are we doing it because we think that, because we know that we have to do it?
We don't have to do it.
We don't have to do it.
Well, they're recommending that we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but they don't have any power, it's not like the state's coming and saying, you have to do this.
And the reason, the reason you've been talking about it for two years is because we know we need it. It's been a matter of the process of getting there, he's, as Peter said, there was changes in the leadership.
Students that were in the middle school two years ago, that aren't in the middle school anymore, and I'm saying, geez, could that really have helped?
Sure.
Those kids?
Absolutely, of course it could. It, what, what we know about middle-level education, and what the needs of middle, young adolescents are, is that they need to have help with their social, emotional development. They have to, they, so, one of the ways to do that, to take a bigger, a big, like, big groups and make them smaller, is through advisory programs. But we don't wanna create a Mickey Mouse advisory program to say we checked the box.
Right, exactly.
Bought a canned program or had experiences like you had in school, where we have the time for it, but it's really not of any kind of value.
Right.
We have no interest in that.
Right.
So, that's part of it, is we haven't found the right structure and the right, um, and it, and Peter, you know, just really took over this situation again.
Yeah, and I get, I mean, I know, I get that it's, it's not something that can happen overnight.
No.
And yet, at the same time, the sense that I have is, um, A, the middle school's gonna change next year.
Yes.
So, there's that change that's coming up rapidly.
Yes.
And B, um, we still have to, we still have to be engaged in the process of teaching, educating the students that are in the middle school right now. So, to me, it does feel like, you know, you have all these balls in there, you gotta keep the, keep this going, and then we gotta figure out what the program is, and we gotta get the faculty on board, and, you know, maybe they just don't wanna change, I mean, there's.
Well, that's why Peter, that's why Peter has, is working with NELMs.
Uh-huh.
And that's why he had them come and talk about the report and what the findings were.
So that's, but that's very useful to know that NELMs came and presented this report to the faculty today, and that, that we're continuing that relationship, I mean, that, that to me is just a, offers a level of comfort. The, um, just reading this report at home was like, yeah, right, big deal, like, why do we waste, again, we paid for this, you know? But, but to know that there's a, you know, I couldn't even proofread it properly, I mean, but, but to know that this is like an ongoing support, um, and that there's, that there's a community process around it is helpful. So, I appreciate having those, those are pieces that are, were dismissing for me.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, middle-level teachers, uh, their comments were, we have a highly qualified staff that consistently takes advantage of professional development opportunities, they're enthusiastic about working with students and adults, and, uh, again, additional middle-level material should be added to the professional development collection in the library. With regard to parents and community, um, their comment was that we should provide consistent, clear communication about the transition to parents and the community. So we really need to, you know, do a better job of letting, uh, letting them know, uh, what we're doing, um, inviting them in to the school, and I think we've made, uh, some big steps since last spring with that. Um, and, uh, we will continue to do that. So, um, I think we're, we're, uh, that's something that wasn't news to us.
What, what have we done since last spring?
We've had, um, the, uh, sixth grade had, so every grade had something where, a, a celebration where they would bring in, um, parents into the school to see it. We've, uh, had the, uh.
What, like that roadkill cafe, like, things like that you're saying?
Yeah.
Like in the cafe?
Yeah, but at the end of the year, we had parents come in to, to help celebrate the year at the end, and, um, uh, I think the staff was really amazed at the participation, and, um, that, that went a long way, and, and this is not just exclusive to middle school either, so we're trying to work at that in the high school too.
Creativity and innovation.
That was unbelievable.
So many parents came out for that, and.
Do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that.
Well, I think it's, you know, when I think about, again, and I'm not there yet, but I think about having a child who will leave Penbrook and go to the middle school, and I'm just trying to anticipate, what am I gonna want as a parent? I'm gonna wanna know, like, well, what is middle school about, and then I, it just occurred to me, and somebody's gonna send me a handbook, and it's gonna be itty-bitty print with a million pages, and I, it's not gonna feel like, even if it has all the answers to all my questions, I'm not gonna be as inclined to read it as I might be to read a warm fuzzy letter from you with reference to, you know, you wanna know how the lunch, how lunch works, you want, here's where you can go and find it. You wanna know where the curriculum is, you wanna know what our goals are for middle school, and how we are going to connect with you. This is where you can find that information, like, and, and I think.
Well, we, you know, we invite, on two occasions, we invite the fifth-grade parents in. So we really do a lot of that transition, we have a night in the spring, and then we have an orientation in August. So, and we, and really, it's, I don't even do a presentation anymore, because it's, it's just Q and A.
Yeah.
And it, I think that, um, I get a lot of good feedback about that, so.
Well, Margaret, I've got some.
Hi, Margaret.
Back there.
I, I wanna jump into this conversation also, um, I haven't had a chance to talk with Peter, but one of the things that we've been talking about at our school council, um, is the transition when we're, um, you know, K and S, so the transitions from sixth to seventh. And one of the, um, suggestions is to offer events throughout the year at the middle school, so that we're through the year, some of those sixth-grade events are happening in Peter's school, and not really even in the Penbrook, as a way to transition the kids. So we even start right in the fall, providing opportunities for the kids to be in the school, so that they are really very familiar with, you know, the building, the teachers, and how things operate, so that really when you're transitioning to seventh, it's pretty seamless, so.
Sounds.
Talk about how, you know, that wouldn't be for two years, but.
Right, right.
Well, I think it's such a difference when you go from Penbrook, and then you do go to the middle school. I mean, I know it's totally, you know, I know you have to let your kids go at some point, but I do, I love to the roadkill cafe, I'm looking at more thing, more, for things during the day, that I can actually go in, and not only see what my own child is doing, but to kinda get a feel for the environment, that my child is, you know, walking the halls, okay, you know, just to get a feel of, of what the middle high school is like on a regular day. You know, just things like that, like inviting the te, the, the parents in to do, whether it's, you know, whether it's a math, um, just a instruction on math that the kids are learning, I don't know, I just wish we could go in more to see the school on a regular basis.
Well, we're working on that, so we, we want the same thing.
Yeah, and I do think, I do think parents.
The open house, I mean, it's hard.
Like at night, you mean?
Especially if you have more than one child, yeah, at night, but going from class to class to class, and by the time I'm done with that night, I'm exhausted. And I'm, you know, impressed, and I, it, I do have a sense of, of how much my child is, you know, is, is doing and experiencing within a day, and I understand after that night, when they come home, they're like, oh. You know, I, I mean, I, it, it's a different kind of, it's not the same, I mean, there are many different experiences, many different types of events, but that is one important one to me, to understand the day-to-day.
People aren't just walking the halls, you know, getting a feeling for the environment.
But there was so, so much of an opportunity to do things at Penbrook, and then all of a sudden, it just seems like it ends.
But that would be like volunteer opportunities, um, I'm just thinking of the things people did there, that was volunteer opportunities, coming and seeing, um, you know, like, the celebration that your student was doing around curriculum.
But they had.
Or, or all-school meetings.
But you could go in and volunteer for math, um, you know, you would go in and work with a group of students.
If the teacher wanted it, right.
Yeah, if the teacher wanted it, but I know when my first child went into middle school, I ended up just volunteering at lunch. Because I'm like, you know what, I just, you know, lunch was always the difficult time for kids, you know, I'm like, okay, you know.
We could always use help at lunch, you can come back.
I, I do it, I don't know if my kids would want me to do it.
You know what, that's part of, that's part of the transition.
Even care if it wasn't his lunch, his or her lunch.
That features in.
You know what I mean? You know, but I, but even that helped, because I, I just kinda got a feeling of, of just the environment and everything, so, um, I wonder if people know that there is a need for that, for volunteers at lunch and stuff.
Well, I don't know if we're at the point of volunteers yet, but we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get it out there.
Well, I, I do think community engagement, that the town.
I needed somebody to do the crosswalk, I couldn't find anybody.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do it. I'm not doing that. Yeah, I'm not doing that. Could be people running me over.
Okay, um, so now we're at the place where we act, we, we really wanted them to focus the assessment. And that's organization, organizing relationships for learning, which is basically all about the teaming concept. And then the other one was the, the advisory, so, um. What they had to say about that is currently only the grade eight team is made up of designated subject specialists. In grade six and seven, a subject matter teacher off team teaches on, I don't like the way they worded that, but let me tell you what they mean by that.
Please.
They mean that only the eighth grade, uh, everyone on the eighth grade team teaches in the eighth grade. And, um, that is not true in grade six and seven. Because of the size of the school, so if we wanted to keep class sizes reasonable, then we had to get people that taught across teams. I, that's not ideal for a middle school, but.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
It's the only way you can manage class sizes.
Right.
So, anything, cause there's four academic core areas, so, it would be great if we had. Classes of eighty, but we don't, so when we have a hundred and fifteen and things like that, we have to make six, six groups of kids. So I have to bring in somebody to teach two sixth grade math classes until, for, for all the subjects. So that's what they're talking about, and that's one of the things that we struggle with, because we're, we're not small enough. But sometimes we're too big, so, it's, we're, we're right in the middle and we have to do things like that.
And how's that gonna change next year?
That's the question, right? We were hoping, Peter doesn't think it can happen yet, but we were hoping that we would just have designated middle school teachers. Because, that we'd be able to just, and not have to share.
Yep.
You mean with the high school?
Yeah, cause then that would allow you the availability of not just having three blocks for specials, you'd have every, every period could be used differently. It would give you more, more flexibility, but we don't know that we're gonna have enough staff to just be able to do that.
But we don't share in the middle school, we don't share academic teachers. All, anyone that teaches an academic area in the middle school just teaches in the middle school.
Right.
But they don't all teach the same grade. Honestly, next year, you're probably gonna have some people that teach middle and high school academically, so.
But we did have that, like, we had a science teacher last year that was a high school designated science teacher that taught one.
Yeah.
Seventh grade class.
Yeah.
So we did have to, we did have to do that.
Yeah, and actually, now that you mention that, I do have a math teacher that teaches a high school class.
As well as a middle school?
Yeah, mostly middle school, but when the sixth grade goes, with, with, you know, in, in order to. To, you know, have a full-time teacher, they're probably gonna have to share in the high school.
And that is, that is not ideal, I mean, it is what it is, but it's not ideal, because there's difference, that you have to understand how middle school kids are different than high school kids and. You know, they are different, and so you have to be able to adjust your, it's not about knowing the content, it's really about knowing how to.
Yeah, it's knowing how to shift your personality to that.
Is part of this a budget issue?
No, it's really a size issue.
It's a size to keep a teacher employed at a full-time level.
The people that, not even that, the, the people that we share, uh, are specialists, are non-academics. So, if you have a middle school model and you have three grades, then that's gonna be, there's three periods during the day. That we teach specials, and we do it that way, so the teachers are all in one grade can be off at the same time, so they can meet as a team.
Oh, sure.
So in order to do that, you need, this is where we're kinda too small to have our own staff. Because I need X amount of, um, PE teachers, for example, but to, to do it all. In three periods, I need three bodies.
Same, yeah.
So, so to have your own middle school staff, I would have to hire some PE teachers that worked. Like, three of them that worked three periods a day. And that's all they worked, and so who's gonna do that? So, that, that's kinda the problem, but I haven't given up, and I'm, it, it, it's really, and I told the middle school staff that today, I mean, we could do so much more. If we really had our own staff, if we didn't have to share.
Your own schedule.
We could, you would.
I know, because when the final, when the final exams happen, I just know the whole school seems to be like crazy.
Yeah.
The middle school has to kinda, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, don't take this offensively, I just wonder how much. Academic, you know, I, I don't think the academic. Level is there when the high school is doing their.
You mean in the middle school?
In the middle school.
Well, we're kinda moving toward exams for them also, so we're, we're trying to.
No, well, what I'm saying is when they're doing their exams, I just find like, I hear just people saying that the kids. Didn't have like a very academic day.
In the middle school?
Be, well, bec- right, because it's just, because some of the teachers, you know, the crossover that had occurred, they had to.
So they had to have a substitute in their middle school class, cause they had to go and administer a test.
That doesn't happen often, that's, happens with, you know, a couple classes.
Yeah.
For the most part, but, but the whole, the whole point is that we have to have the same schedule because we're sharing staff.
Right, yeah.
You could do so much more in the middle school.
Sure, could create a middle school schedule.
Yeah, and we can't.
I mean, and we're not gonna talk about it today, but one of the things that we've talked about at length at administrative team, when we've been talking about this transition from six on. Is six to the elementary school is, well, should we be doing, should we just do a junior high? Should we just not do a middle school, just do a ju, you know, junior high, which would be, which is not organized, well, there's a big difference. You don't organize around teams, you organize around content. So you might have a, a high, you know, in a, a high level seventh grade math class and a lower level seventh grade math class, and kids get put into those classes.
Hmm.
Based on what they know of the content, so what you give up in that is the whole issue of the developmental nature of teams and, you know. Again, that, there's not a, there's not a right answer.
Yeah, you, you compromise the social emotional aspect of middle school.
Mm-hmm.
In order to just have a junior high school, yeah.
And the alignment of the curriculum, I mean, because the, the, in, in, within the team concept, every teacher in the seventh grade will know exactly what the other teachers are teaching and.
Well, you still have the same curriculum, you'd have the seventh grade curriculum be the seventh grade, you just might have different levels of kids.
Assigning homeworks and tests and.
Well, you wouldn't have that level of collaboration, you wouldn't have that coordination.
Right, the level of collaboration would be less.
Have a seventh grade, uh, high math, I might have a seventh grade low math and an eighth grade average class. Right, I mean, I'm just saying, that, that's what could happen, a teacher could, could have that, um, but, again, you know, we, we weighed. Believe me, we had extensive conversations about this, you know, what's the right way to go with this?
When would that be coming to the committee, are you thinking?
Well, we, cause we may not, we may not bring it forward to the committee, because we don't think that's got merit, um, but.
No, but the whole, the.
What the model's going to be, um, we're, we're still discussing that, but I would say, well, actually, did you notice on the, um.
It wouldn't be a student.
Did you notice I put transition, Pembroke transition meetings in there, at least once a month? So now I'm in the process of taking the notes we created on the board and blocking off Friday afternoons. So, it's, I'm literally making a, a table that says, here are the dates, here's the topic, here's invited to the meeting, and then here's what we're trying to decide.
Okay.
So, and then, based on that, then I'll come to the committee at those times when we put that in, say, this is what we're talking about.
That's great.
And if there's decisions that you need to make, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to make them.
Sure. No, it sounds extremely complex, I mean, and I get it, but I also think that this is a really valuable discussion for the community to know, because I, I, I do think. My sense is that, you know, we, we grapple with the issues of middle school here.
Absolutely.
And that you do, you all grapple and take it very seriously, I just don't think the community knows how much. Time and thought is invested in understanding really how best to meet the needs of the students at that level, and so, I know this is. Maybe taking longer to work through than, but maybe you had anticipated, but I think this is a really beneficial discussion. For me, it, it certainly is, and I appreciate you taking the time to walk through this report with us.
Well, whatever the model we choose, it, kids at that level still have unique needs. And we have to find a way to meet those, so, this advisory program is something that kids need at that level.
Yeah.
So, if it's a junior high or a middle school, we're still gonna have that.
Have to do something to help.
So, yeah.
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 Okay, so, in terms of, uh, recommendations, uh, about teaming, et cetera. Um, they would like us to continue the development and implementation, implementation of guidelines and protocols. For the productive use of team planning time, and what they're referring to is that I meet with team leaders and go over the agendas. Um, that's kind of a new model for them, um, and, and NELMS says we should continue to do that. Um, to continue to provide PD, um, on effective team practicing, I think we need more of that. Um, supporting opportunities for expanding understandings of middle level children, I think we need to do more of that. Um, and reevaluating the benefits of the current schedule and investigating opportunities for middle level subject teams to meet. So what they mean by that is, um. We have to find ways to get, um, people in the middle school to meet as departments also.
They meet as teams now.
So they meet by grade.
Right.
Rather than by subject.
I see, okay.
And, um, we need to find ways and probably is, you know, having to get some substitutes in. Once in a while or cover some classes, so all the English teachers in the middle school can meet at once, you know, and they're not looking for that to happen every day. They're looking to, you know, maybe if that happens once a month or twice a month, that would be very beneficial, and we, we certainly, uh. That is part of our action plan to, to bring our scores up, too.
Yeah.
Cause we, we think that's very important. Okay, um, this is more kind of, um, uh, turning point stuff, so, uh, I think it's best that we just get to. Um, the observations that they made is, uh, so this is more about the learning environment. Um, they said it's a well-maintained facility, and, uh, even though we continue to go under, undergo renovations. Um, the entry to the building is bright and welcoming, but I didn't write this now, but, um, the schools are talking about the carpeting. And when you go upstairs, and you want it to be a bright, cheery environment, and it's not, it's not, does not physically look at that, so. We have to figure out a way to get those carpets out of there. It absolutely transformed the feeling you get when you walk into the, the building itself, when we pulled those rugs out of there, so, um.
And that's on the capital improvement, the CIP list?
Right.
Not as the immediate priority, but a second tier priority.
But we, maybe we need to move that up in the priority list, can we?
The ones that are on are a priority.
That's right.
Uh, they like that we have, uh, student work on display, um, all over the place up there, the student star of the month, they really liked. Um, they like, uh, the Kiev organization and how it supports leadership development. Um, they like the idea of respect, responsibility and community, which is our theme and focal point. And the variety of school-sponsored after-school activities, um, they do not like that we do not have an advisory program, so. We, we get that, um, so their recommendations are to develop a, an advisory, uh, period. And, uh, get a, a task force together to develop the curriculum and continue to find ways to showcase student work. And, uh, they, they really, um, we're gonna have to really, I, I want a lot of kid input about this one. Um, they, they want us to, to foster more, um, of, of a sense of belongingness with, with the teams. They want them to identify like a mascot and a team logo and, and team name, like, you go into some middle schools and there's the blue Jays and the. And, um.
That's an interesting idea.
Yeah, it is, but, yeah, I think it takes away a little bit from the whole.
Yeah.
When you focus on, you know, the individual grade, so, I wanna know how kids think about that, I wanna know how parents think about that. I wanna know how the staff thinks about that, so that.
It's, there's only one team, it, that's more a prevalent situation when you're in schools where there's, you know. Three or four teams at a particular grade level, you only have one team.
Right.
I see, so it's a, it's, it's just a, but that, I think that's a great idea, Peter, get, get feedback.
We did.
We did?
Yeah.
Well, we had it for one, just in the sixth grade, no, just in the sixth grade, we, we tried it, I think, twice. Um, since I've been here, but we, we got away from that when we made a move toward. Toward getting subject matter teachers teaching, you know, in the content area, because you can't, you can't really do that. In, you know, if, if you wanna try to accomplish that.
What a lot of schools will do is they'll have, um, two-person teams, so Pam teaches English and Social Studies and I teach Math and Science. But I might have a certification in math, but not in science, and Pam might have a certification in English and not in Social Studies. So, it, you know, for interdisciplinary work, which I'm surprised they, of course, they didn't look at the curriculum, but if interdisciplinary would've come up, cause that's a turning points principle. Um, and, uh, you know, so, when we, when the state started to say you need, now you're cert, by, based on certifications. If you teach, oh, if any more than one subject out of your area of certification, then you're, you shouldn't be doing it.
Right.
And so then it became, like, okay, how are we gonna manage that, at one point, we had an English, a sci, a social studies and a math teacher. And then every one of those teachers taught science, and then that caused a lot of questions on the part of parents saying, well, jeez, you know. This, these aren't science teachers, what do, you know, you, you, what's your, what's your value for that content? So it's a question of, do you do two-person interdisciplinary teams, where you have a lot of the integration and social emotional stuff, or do you do content teams? Which are based on subject matter.
Right, right.
So it, again, this discussion is, is showing you the level of complexity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's not one right way to do it or only one way to do it.
So, um, to sum it all up, um, they see that we're at our own turning point. Um, and that there's, this, the new transition, the new grade transition really gives us an opportunity to really jump in. Um, you know, with, uh, both feet for a, a, a good middle level program. Um, they think that we, we're, we have a lot of, of, uh, the elements in place already. And, in my observations, uh, coming back to the school, I saw that too, but I see that they're, they're not as connected as well as we can. So outside of the advisory level, we just need to, to pull everything together, and I think, uh, you know, under our theme of respect. Responsibility, community, and then we're really gonna be off and running. In terms of, you know, what we actually need to do, and this is kinda the summary, um, we need to, the, hit the, the big three. Points here is to expand knowledge and understanding of, you know, the middle level child. Explore and research components of, uh, middle level teams and teaming. And explore and research the components of a, eh, effective middle level advisory program, so, that's what our task force is going to do. That's it.
What I do wanna say about the middle school that I, I enjoy thoroughly is the way the class is. Um, like in English class, we'll talk, you know, you're reading a book, say, The Golden Goblet, and your social studies class.
Interdisciplinary teaching.
I love that, and it's, it's so, um, you know, when, when my seventh grader comes home, it's so clear, I'm like. As I'm reading The Golden Goblet along with him, I'm like, oh, wait a minute, we just did this in social studies, where it talked about the, you know, fertile soil, you know, and, and I'm just. I really enjoy that, and I'm glad to see that it is so, um, pronounced.
That's a great advantage of a middle school, when you organize by, by grade.
Right, and the teachers, how do they feel about that, do they, do they like that way of teaching, like, do they, they feel like it's more effective? Because the kids are, like, learning.
Do they like being, under the middle school model, like, organized like that?
Do they feel like that whole, like, the crossing over?
That interdisciplinary work?
Yeah, I think that's useful if they're doing interdisciplinary.
Yeah.
Because it almost keeps like.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's challenging for them.
It is really hard as a teacher to do that.
Challenging to plan like that, and, uh, but it, there's great benefits when you're teaching.
Yeah, I see it, I, I really like that.
The, um, the depth. The um the depth of of knowledge and understanding on a particular subject is so much greater when you're looking at it. At the same time from different angles.
Right, right. And do you find that in the high school?
Like um last year for my honors English class and for junior year, they had um. We would do American Lit for that year and you also take US History Two um if you don't go into the AP. And you see that the building of literature goes with the building of the history, so it was like that was helpful to see and that type of style.
We actually have a truly uh team taught integrated class in the high school this year, a film class. So it's taught, you can take it for either social studies or English credit.
Oh, we talked about this last year.
Yeah, and it's really doing well.
Successful.
Yeah.
Well, I know you already, you had like a a great amount of kids sign up for that.
Yeah, we did.
That's good.
So that's really, Niesk is going to really like that.
So that's like, like a pilot.
It is a pilot, it's um it's expensive because I have, you have two teachers in there at the same time. But we, you know, we felt that.
You have to have teachers that really complement each other, too.
That's the tricky part, and that they wanna work together and and they're compatible and, you know, when you're building your lesson plans at ten o'clock at night. After you've put your kids to bed and help them, and then, oh, you have to connect with that teacher that you're team teaching with, there's. The laptops are helping.
Yeah, it they they are, yeah, technology helps, it's a lot easier now than it was ten years ago to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, I'm excited to see things moving.
Looking forward to updates on hearing how things are going with the whole middle school.
Great.
Hey, we have to, oh, we don't have to.
Financial report.
Good night.
Financial report, that's you, John.
The first thing is the budget process timeline for the FY sixteen budget development, Carol asked me to put together a calendar.
Remind me who's on budget and finance?
Barbie and who else?
Is it Lorraine maybe?
It might be Lorraine, okay.
So I just modeled it similar to what we had last year.
Yeah, great.
That in the early March, we had the public hearing and adopt the, oh, I have a mistake, adopt the FY sixteen budget.
FY eleven sixteen, can I believe that? It's amazing.
Here we are, having a budget. Uh financial committee meeting. Next week, maybe? Um, I don't know. It's coming up. I don't know. The seventeenth? Seventeenth?
Yes.
Seventeenth.
Is there any way we can get this budget calendar on the website by any chance? Yep. Definitely, just so people can be aware of what's happening when.
Definitely. Um it's gonna be a busy winter.
We have to start having those Friday meetings before I can build the budget, so.
Exactly, we gotta have, we're gonna do staffing next Friday. Okay.
Um the second thing on the agenda is the turf field budget, that's on the backside of the calendar.
I love how you use the paper.
That's Laura.
Good Laura, good job.
I don't know if you wanna speak to the budget.
Well, actually, uh as you can see, there's sort of multiple components to this budget. So there's the money from the CPC, which was one point two five of, you know, million dollars, right? Then there's free cash, which was the two hundred thousand that um the town meeting approved, and then there's the G A donation. Um and so um these are all, this represents all of the um change order orders and payments. That are have come out of what account. And as you can see at the bottom, there's, there's a balance in both of them. Um the only thing that's not reflected on here, well, actually.
There's no parentheses on them.
That's correct, we're not behind. So the, so the sixty thousand dollar for soil removal on site, that actually assumed six thousand cubic yards. It ended up being.
Fifty two hundred.
Fifty two hundred cubic yards that we moved up to the upper field. Um and in order to make that um that upper field look the way we want it to look. Which is that it would have a nice little berm, but a nice little slope um seeded and put hay on it for the wintertime. It's gonna be about ninety eight hundred dollars, but if you look at the sixty thousand, all but one thousand of that can be covered. So that that there's no new money other than the one thousand dollars. Um so that, this is fine, what I'm, what I'm gonna talking to Mike Farrell about is moving. Um some of these expenses over here that had to do with the ledge. Because that that ledge, we were digging into that ledge in order to move, to to get the soil, right, to get the. So I'm I'm hoping that, based on the way the warrant article is written and the the clause it says, and related thereto. That they will consider those related thereto expenses.
Okay.
And because they do involve the rock and the soil. Um so if I can, if we can move those over to the soil mitigation.
Determination, what if it be Mike?
Well, I I I think if we're in both in, we're all in agreement, then it's not gonna be a problem. Because basically the town, we, on that field, we moved soil that wasn't highly contaminated, as well as the soil that was contaminated. So um I'm hoping that we can take some of the expenses that are currently in the CPC, move them to the soil mitigation that are appropriate. Then then that money um will basically be spent. The G A A was not planning to put the two lights in, but it is gonna come out of their budget and they, we, they acknowledge that. Um and then whatever money would be left would be in the CPC funds, and then if there were any of those, what do you call them? Not extras, but um alter alternates that were part of the, of part of the uh plan. That money could be spent on the alternates.
And those alternates were put in priority.
They were put in priority. And, you know, honestly, if there was extra money.
Bleachers, like a.
Uh well, the bro- well, the bleachers, if you, if you over by the field, the bleachers that Mike got be- because of the vandalism, then he replaced them. The bleachers are already in, where we're gonna have them, the um, the the um retaining wall is already in. And now, all the soil's moved in, it's really now, they've just put down the um, the, well, the, I guess it's um. What is that, gravel, gravel, so the next step after the gravel is then, then they put the next surface down and then they, the turf is within a week or two of coming. On board, the the new estimated date of completion is pushed into December now, but.
And was that because of the removal of the soil?
It was much more soil than they expected.
Weeks.
Yeah.
And the drilling.
I mean, one, one day, they they moved those big trucks, ninety eight of them, ninety eight, it was, it just was a huge amount of unexpected soil.
And and how is that road going up to the fields, is it fine, like those?
They've been going right up.
Trucks, it didn't?
Well, actually, when, no, when you, when you go up, they go up the road fine, but there, where they were um.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they're they're rushed, but that's part of this ninety eight hundred dollars I'm talking to you about. They'll take care of all that and grade it and smooth the hills, the hill, well, it's it's a small hill. And then um grass and seed it, so, so I just wanted you to have this, so you see where we are with the budget.
It's a very interesting budget that we have the three.
Yes, yes.
It's been interesting to keep track of it.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Interesting, is that your word of choice or?
Oh, right, and when you got with the credits, that's when it got confusing, when the credits came in. Yeah.
Yeah, like we had.
But thank goodness we had the credit.
Actually, can I give that to you?
If we didn't have the credit, like just, just to move, sure, just to move the excess soil offsite. At fifty two cents. Would've been a two hundred thousand dollar.
Right.
Situation, which we, as you can see, we we wouldn't eat, the project would've stopped.
But with the way the project was moving, I was saying, oh my goodness, that's what we're gonna have to do. And thank goodness, we had some great minds that all sat together in a room and figured it out.
Figured it out.
It worked out.
But I think that seventy seven thousand dollar credit really saved us.
Is it, is it fair to say the the twenty two plus the eighteen, call it forty thousand dollars?
Right.
Plus a little, is, I'm essentially under budget at the end of the day, allowing for.
Alternates.
Alternate, yeah, for for for.
Well, what's.
For enhancements.
Yeah, I thi- I think so.
Which I think is is worth, I mean, that's, that's a nice way to come at it at the end of the day.
She thought there'd be about twenty thousand left, but in, I, the only thing I'm not sure about that's in here would, is the, oh, um. The only thing that is not in here is the um scoreboard and the um. Scoreboard and the installation of the, the installation of the scoreboard, that was about fifty five thousand dollars. But the G A A believes they have a donation for the cost of the scoreboard. So what isn't reflected in here still, and that's why I think she thinks it'll be twenty, is I think it was between fifteen and eighteen. Unless we can get a donation for that as well, um that would come off of, that would come off of this cost. And one of the things that I will be bringing back before you is um, you know, a a um, a memorandum of understanding. Perhaps to consider for the donor, um they have a special request. Is it in the packet, okay?
So we we won't be discussing that tonight, right?
You know, I have to make sure, here's what I, here's what I prefer to do. Um I would prefer to make sure that. John and and the people who are working on this go to the potential donor and make sure that this type of a resolution. Is consistent with what they're thinking. Yeah, before we approve it.
I had a, I had a quick question on that, I don't know if now's the right time, ju- ju- relating to the the cost of installing it. Um it seems like if we're, if we're giving recognition to the the group that's donating the scoreboard, we're almost. What would be the incentive for someone to help donate, if that's even an opportunity, for someone to donate the the installation costs if they can't be recognized? For donating, supporting that.
No, I think the the, well, the only way that would be a problem, if a certain kind of institution.
Yeah, if it was a competing institution.
It was a competing institution, so like.
Oh, was it competing, okay, okay, fair enough.
Same line of business. Trying to like.
Yeah.
I I misread the.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if that, I thought that made it sound very reasonable, that agreement, if it's somebody in another line of business, they can advertise on the scoreboard, it was like, yeah. That sounds good.
Anyway, that's, I just wanted you to have this, so you could see the um process, the progress.
Yeah, thank you. I have um, I have another warrant, it's the next Quirk. You have the copy of the Quirk invoice in there, but I added a Gale um invoice to it too. So we can approve and vote on that.
This, right, John, no?
That's in there, but I added a Gale invoice to it.
Okay, so this is the one where the question about the forty four thousand came up, right?
Last week.
So you wanna explain why, why that stays?
So the forty four thousand, if you look on the detail, the forty four thousand dollars for the additional light poles, way down on line twenty nine. You were gonna approve it at last meeting and I asked you not to because.
Right.
I was afraid that um that we shouldn't be approving it through the project because the uh G A A is paying for it. But as Lindsay reminded me, we signed the contract for the one point six million, uh which is the total project. And the G A A was paying for the turf with the donation, so they're still gonna make the donation to the town.
I see.
The forty four thousand, so since we're the entity that has the contract with this, with the Quirk. We have to approve it and pay the invoice and then we'll follow up with G A A to donate it, yeah.
And I think right now, depending on where the budget all ends up, so let's say if there was twenty thousand dollars left and the consensus of opinion was, because of the group was. Well, let's, let's not then make, let's not force G A A to pay the full forty four, just apply the twenty and then their donation is less.
Be less, right.
So that's part of why, we just don't know where the budget, or we might decide to put the mound in and then they, they'll be alright with paying the forty four. But there's just a discussion that would go on, I think, with that.
Okay, so am I approving this?
The warrant, uh you can just approve the warrant that I handed you, which for the two invoices. It looks like three invoices, but I have to break out the soil remediation of the Quirk invoice, it's one invoice.
Okay, is the two ninety four, can I do that as one?
Yes, yes.
One whole.
Oh.
Vote.
Yeah, and then they, the three members can sign it.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve. Um invoice number five, three one dash oh four to Quirk Construction. As well as invoice one four zero nine two one nine to Gale Associates totaling two hundred and ninety four thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars and eighty cents. As presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Okay, so the the next. Sure. Uh so the next thing is the, what Carol just spoke about, it's the proposal for the change order for the um. The grading and finish work upon the top field, so if you approve this at a school community meeting, then when the paperwork comes in, but you can just sign it.
Okay.
Okay, so Quirk is gonna be able to do that?
Right, so you'll have that A one A form to sign again?
Yeah.
But if the school community approves it.
Okay, so let me just take a look at. So the top soil is gonna be provided by the town at no cost?
Right.
So we we're get, so we have that available to us?
Peter has some at the um.
At the highway department?
Yep, but then he also has some screened loam that he.
Oh, okay.
Will donate if additional loans needed.
It does not include any reseeding or regrading after the work, okay? Okay, so uh the. Did you take, have an opportunity, okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the um. Change, i- is that what I'm gonna say, change order proposal number eleven?
Yeah.
From Quirk Construction Corporation in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars to. Do I have to get into description?
No, I think they're just in that amount.
Okay, as presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now um subcommittee reports. Um before we get into the actual subcommittee reports, I just wanted to give Michael an opportunity to update us on the uh conference that you attended last week.
Sure, I went to the messes, the joint uh conference, mess association of school committees. And mess association of school superintendents, um I guess there were a lot of, it was their biggest ever, I don't remember the number. Um but from all over the state and it was a combination of, I got to do part of my mandatory training resulting in.
Yet another binder.
Yet another binder of of nighttime reading, um but I think I went to, I think it was ten sessions over the course of four days. Um and I thought it was, it was nice to be able to to talk to.
Stayed down there?
I did, in Hyannis.
That would've been crazy.
A drive.
Okay.
Um and it was nice to be able to sort of see similar districts and also kind of the big monster districts and the different things that. That they're dealing with that we're not, or that we're dealing with and that they're not and and I think Alana said it very well before, that we are very lucky to serve on the school committee in Georgetown. Cause there's, there's a lot of stress and and challenging situations that that I know are are out there. But but are not on our plate sort of every day.
Alana and I had the pleasure of going to charter the course together and we both said that after, we're like, oh, wow.
That was an education.
I got that same impression when I went down there, I talked to people and it's like, wow, you're dealing with that.
Well, and and yes, and just listening to questions and and hearing what, what a typical meeting looks and sounds like and. Um it's, it was, it was, it was nice to be, to be representing Georgetown for the year. But I think the the sessions themselves, I think, it was a lot of best practices, sorts of stuff. And we had a long Common Core, I had, I had three hours of Common Core and park conversation, which was, it was actually, it was really interesting. Uh there was the deputy commissioner from D E S E was there, um and then it was Danvers and. Forget the other school, but talking about implementation, um and I think one of the things that came out of it is the. The um school committee's delegate body passed a resolution recommending that the state reexamine the move to the park testing. Um what I will say was was interesting is there seemed to be a. The the deputy commissioner seemed to be resigned to the fact that that it might not be, not resigned to the fact. Recognize the fact that it might not be park in its current iteration, in its current shape and and form. But the next generation, whether it's next generation MCAS or non-park, wh- whatever the next thing is.
Whatever they named it.
It's gonna be very much in that direction.
Yeah, and I think we can all agree that MCAS does need a little bit of a reboot. It's been a long time.
Yeah.
Just going from that to the park.
Cause it's not measured, right. So it's, it's sort of a, it's a bit of a full steam ahead, recognizing that the endpoint might be park or might be.
Next generation M-CAS or something.
Yeah, which it is a, that is a phrase not used apparently by. Next generation M-CAS is not, it's a next, next generation assessment.
So were you able to see a lot of the people that was strong M-CAS and then the strong park?
There was, it was actually, it was, the room was the biggest of the conference and it was probably only got up to twenty percent full. I thought it was gonna be a full room and, and kind of a, a shouting match, it wasn't. So there were probably two hundred seats, of which there were forty people there, something like that. So I think they were kind of surprised by the turnout as well. There were a couple, and I think I mean a couple of vocal opposition. But everyone else seemed to think it was kind of the writing on the wall, so let's embrace it and make it work. And kind of do it the way we want to, rather than yelling and screaming and recognizing that a year from now or two years from now, we're gonna be in the same boat, kind of regardless. So, um, kind of do the planning rather than, than fighting. Kind of recognizing what, what might or might not happen.
Right.
And it's definitely better than fighting, yes.
But yeah, I think there was a lot of, a lot of, like, good P R strategies, good school finance, um, tools, succession planning, dealing with difficult conversations, which was an interesting workshop. But yeah, I mean, I think a lot of the, a, a lot of, a lot of the sessions that I went to was kind of how to get the word out about what, what is happening in the district, how to communicate with the parents, how to communicate ongoing over the course of the year, not just, you know, it's a new year, we started, there's back to school night. But what about November, December, what about the other six months out of the year, not just beginning of the year, end of the year? Get everyone's attention, not every day certainly, but throughout the year, so it's not a, we're gonna have a great year, we had a great year, all right. Which is a lot of, a lot of what you end up hearing. Yeah.
Trust me, it was a great year.
Exactly, yeah. So yeah, it was, it was a lot of, a lot of good stuff.
The two weekends are good, but there's something in between.
Little stuff.
You know, yeah, yeah, weekends aren't bad, it's just that, you know, yeah, gotta have something in between.
But yeah, and a lot of, a lot of P R stuff that we can talk about.
Yes, yes.
Committee and, yeah.
So you enjoyed your time?
I did, yeah.
That's good.
It was, it was. It was long, but it was good.
How many people have had the opportunity to, to, that have gone? Cause I don't recall since I've been on.
I think, I think, uh, we have had some represented, I think George went a couple of times and. But yeah, it hasn't, yeah, it hasn't been, um, well attended, I wouldn't say.
Well, it, it, I mean, it is, it is hard.
It's a big commitment.
I know, I appreciate you going, and I've always wanted to go, but then it just comes down to, could I, could I do that?
You don't have to stay for four days.
Right.
You know, like when I go to the superintendent's conference, I, you know, I very, I very seldom would go for the whole time. But, you know, I usually go for, you know, a day and a half. And, uh, but I pick, I pick the day that I wanna hear the keynote, or there's certain sessions that I wanna.
They were sneaky by putting the.
Hyannis.
It was in Hyannis, yeah.
Yes, I wanted to do that.
Oh, yeah, they probably put the speaker at the end.
Well, the, the, the new member of the nation was Friday afternoon and Saturday.
Oh, isn't that funny?
They're, they're smart.
They were a captive audience.
Exactly.
So did you get the full chartering the course?
I believe, yes, I did. So yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it was, it was a good, I, I, I was tongueless, there was a lot of fun open meeting law conversation and, and just sort of the, the role of technology in open meeting law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big problem in a lot of places.
I think it was worth it, definitely a commitment.
Well, we appreciate you going.
I'm glad that you went, thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks for the update.
Sure.
Okay, so budget and finances meeting on the seventeenth. Governance was supposed to meet last week, they didn't. Negotiating is meeting this week.
Yep, Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, question about that.
Oh, yeah.
So I understand from my meeting, recent meeting with Joe and Mike, that, um, the first meeting is really gonna be more discussion about the interests, what are our interests? And then, um, and then, then they do have a formal written proposal, we do not yet. They're, they're, they're fine with not presenting it, but their, um, their rep, Charlamagne Champagne is her name, from M T A, she is going to be physically in the building, but is not going to sit at the table. She's gonna be available for caucusing, if that's what, although I don't think the first meeting, we're really gonna be doing a lot of caucusing. But the question Naomi and I talked, and she, her, the question she had is, you know, do we want her to come? I said, well, maybe, maybe Naomi, if you could be available by phone, if we wanna talk to you, I mean, I hate to have you drag you out there. For this session, I, I'm really not.
Or I hate to cha, I hate to charge.
What?
It's a meeting in your office.
The meeting, um.
Well, usually it's in the conference room, right?
Usually in the.
In the conference.
At Pearlie.
At Pearlie, okay.
Yeah, so why don't I just tell her?
So Charlamagne is gonna be in Pearlie?
She's going, and yes, she's gonna be in Pearlie somewhere.
Oh, just, she so happens to be there?
She's just gonna hang there, and if they need to talk with her, then they're gonna, she's gonna. But it's, it's highly unusual, apparently, she's never gone through negotiation where she hasn't been sitting at the table and the spokesman. But we have had success doing it the other way. So, uh, you know, I said to Joe, I, you know, me, I, I love, I'm, I'm more a collaboration, interest-based bargaining person. You know, I, I'm fine with that, but, you know, I'll see what the committee's thoughts are. But Naomi's fine with not sitting at the table necessarily, cause it does change the dynamic.
I do agree with that.
It does change the dynamic.
It's automatically.
But I don't, I don't know, for this first session, I'm not, I'm just not seeing, I don't think you're gonna need to caucus on this. It's, I think it's just really a matter of, if people could come just a little early, you know, just so we can talk together.
Sure.
But, I mean, I, I don't anticipate ground, ground rules and some initial conversation, and then the following meetings will go in with, with our more formal written proposals.
Yeah, I don't think Naomi's.
Okay, so let me, so let me drop her a note.
We could call her if we need her.
If you need her, yeah. Let, let me, let me drop her a note tomorrow on that.
You're good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so when you say you're early, do you want us to come at like five forty-five? It's at six.
It, what time?
Six.
Uh, no.
So are you thinking five forty, that should be enough time?
Yeah, cause I mean.
It's Wednesday. Yes, I can't.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah.
Get her to dance at five, but on Wednesday.
I know, that's the problem.
No, if I, this is a good night, Wednesday nights are good for me.
Okay, okay.
After five.
We'll remember that.
Thank you.
Okay, so P R?
Uh, our next meeting is also Wednesday on the November thirteenth, and I look forward to hearing more about what Michael's learned.
Oh, good, okay, and safety, has it met you next week?
No, no.
Coming, coming up.
Couple weeks, right?
Yeah. School building?
Uh, school building committee, the next meeting is November eighteenth.
Wow, okay. C-PAC hasn't, and.
C-PAC, the next meeting is December third.
C-PAC is December third?
Yes. At Shelby Walker's home.
Oh, that's right, she was having a.
Yes.
Evening?
Kind of a holiday coffee.
Oh, okay, oh.
Well, I, I don't know if it's, you know, a December coffee.
You can say holiday.
I kinda, I kinda forget how it's written up.
Okay, so.
Seasonal, I like that.
Okay, so moving along, we can go to the second reading of the laptop policy, I J N D E. And get that going. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt policy file I J N D E, which is entitled Laptop Use As Presented.
Can I ask a quick question before, are the laptops just sitting in boxes?
No, Peter's given them to them, they just can't take them home, or they have them in a classroom.
All right, good, that, that was my.
And now they're just waiting.
But it took them some time because Wes had to do something to every single one.
But they are, they are physically being used, they just can't go.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my only question. It's a lot of computers being sitting in boxes.
Yeah.
So moved.
So moved, okay.
Second.
Second, uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, they'll be happy about that?
They would be very happy, thank you.
Okay, and then turf field project update, we already.
You got the update, the only thing I want is just to make sure you, you know, that you've got a little bit of information that we got from the, um, the architects and the engineers on the turf field, because I, I also included, um, uh, the nice letter that we got from Ed Desjardins, uh, you know, expressing some questions about it. And then I, I gave you the responses back, and I did send a letter to, uh, the board of selectmen and Mike Farrell and to Mr. Desjardins, just sharing with him the same things that, uh, I've shared with you.
Now, what about Mr. Tardif?
Did we send something to Mr. Tardif?
Oh, good, she's saying.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I did feel bad that it got.
Yeah.
That he asked that question at a town meeting, and then, um, after talking with the attorney, they're like, well, because they were passed over, you can't ask any questions about it, but going into the meeting, he didn't know they were gonna be passed over. So I felt bad that, um, but I was glad that you stayed for a couple minutes after and talked to him and, so I'm glad he was including on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Can I just, um, I, I did a little bit of, of research on, on, um, alternative fill, some kind of organic fill, and I, I don't know if it would be possible or practical or affordable or anything like that. It's, uh, GeoTurf by Li, uh, Limonta. You're on the staff committee, right?
Yeah, but because it's a G A A donation, I mean, it's. You can give it just.
Just an idea.
I think, we also looked at this thing called, um, it's not, uh, crumb rubber, it's Nike, Nike film. And like Nike sneakers, um, which was about, I read about that, and it was about forty thousand dollars more, you know, to, to put that in.
Of course it was.
And then, um, and then the other, the other is pineapple, pineapple leaves and, uh, there's a couple of other surfaces, surfaces like pineapple leaves. More natural, organic, and those are also more expensive. So the challenge is, um, and the other question is, like, in Newburyport, they're at the front end of their proj, their process. So I don't know how, I don't know how flex, flexibility is, you know, they may have designed the field, putting the rubber crumb in there, and I don't know if they could just change the fill, but I'll inquire about that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll keep this and I'll send it to them. And I think that, you know, remember we had this, remember Rob raised it and you raised it too, Alana?
Yeah.
The question, and, um, you know, Lindsay, Lindsay had, uh, at that time had provided us with some information.
Well, I, what I remember is that, um, whatever information we got was enough to make me back down.
Yeah.
So, I, in, in the end, and, um.
Can you just remind me too, how many, I know you, 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 I think, know this information, is how many turf fields are going in? Somebody mentioned it at the town meeting, every week.
They mentioned it.
How many turf fields are going, it was an amazing amount, I was like, what?
Yeah, like it was.
Yeah, they're really.
Well, because people understand the, the, the benefits, you know, it's like anything else, right, there's risk in anything.
Yeah.
So you have to decide, are the benefits outweighing the risks?
But it seemed to me there was some pretty good research, and what's in the packet as well, that supports it and.
Well, I think that what's got everybody sort of stirred up was the most recent information that came out on Good Morning America. Barbie had raised it too, Today Show, and so that, that sort of got everybody, you know, thinking again about it. So, and, and the, the people that you talk to that are in the turf business say, well, there are really no studies that show that there is a direct link.
Right, right, right.
To health issues, I mean, it's unfortunate that these pro football players got cancer. But as we've learned, when we were talking about the Pembroke, one in three, you're, what you're likely to get, what is risk of one in, one in four people? One in four chances, so you don't really know.
Right.
So they haven't been able to link, that, if they made that medical link and they could really prove it, then I think that's gonna, that's gonna create a, um, a more credible argument not to do it. But I really appreciate Reg bringing it forward and then Ed after him, cause I think that's probably something that a lot of people were won, are wondering about after hearing that story.
Sure.
And so at least, you know, putting it on the table is a good thing.
Yeah, what got, what, what got me about it too, um, is the fact that these older gentlemen in town just care so much about.
Caring about our young athletes, yes.
They don't even.
Have children.
Question, like, what's going on in the schools, and I'm like, wow, that's so not true. There are a lot of people in our town that still really care about what's going on with our kids, and I know Mr. Tardif anyways.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
He has a stake in it, but, um, you know, it just goes to show that it just doesn't end when your kids leave.
No, I, I appreciate it, and again, you know, seeing, you know, Ed's letter, I mean, he pretty clearly explained what his. So, I mean, we have an obligation when someone raises a question like that to go back out and say, well, okay, why, why did we do it? What, what information were we looking at?
Right.
And it still seems to me that the research, you know, on this is, you know, says that it's, the risk is minimal.
Right.
Is there a way, just, I mean, there were, there were maybe a hundred people at the, um, special town meeting.
There were at least one hundred.
There were a hundred and nine. Who all heard the question, and we responded to one or two of them.
Yep.
Is there a way to communicate somehow, somehow, you know, the way you responded to Ed or Reg, just sort of provide the same information?
Like maybe even, or, or even like an edit, like a editorial in the paper?
Just some sort of a, you know, a hundred and nine people heard a question and only one or two heard an answer. A blog post, you know, just some sort of a, a response, so that other people have a, a way to.
That's a good idea.
Hear a resolution.
That's a very good idea.
Okay, thank you. George, we have the school committee topics.
I like that.
I just noted the Baker Adams Scholarship discussion is not on.
Okay. Make sure we find that.
Might wanna add that in, just so that we.
Let's see.
Always.
What, that's usually May? No. Is it May usually, Laura?
Yeah, so we'll add.
Early May. I'd like early May. Yeah, well, cause we usually have to.
Well, you know what usually ends up happening is.
Early May's a good idea.
The new school committee member, which I'm noticing that three people are up.
Three, right, cause.
Three people are up to run again, yeah. So, you know, you never know, there could be six people interested in running.
Could be.
Stranger things have happened, and then all of a sudden, you know, like a, a new person comes on around the time that Baker Adams.
Yeah.
And that's a lot for that new member, so I'd like it as early.
Okay, so you wanna try May twelfth? Wait, so school committee reorganization?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Is it reorganization when you have a new, I don't know when the election.
Well, it would be the, it would be the first meeting, it would be the first meeting after the election. Usually the elections are the first week in the month.
Yeah.
But that, it would, the next meeting isn't until the twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, so we wanna say Baker Adams.
Cause the kids have, have the opportunity to get it to us, that's right.
Yeah, usually. Yeah, I think in the past it's been available in, earlier in April, like earlier in April.
To the kids.
So that, that should be enough time.
I think I, I mentioned that I might like to make a suggestion to reword the, the prompt, the writing prompt, and I come up with something, so.
Oh, so we met, so we did meet, and the only thing I think we agreed on is that we weren't gonna change the prompt.
It, it's actually no change to it, I just added one sentence that you consider and reject.
Send it to me.
That's, or, you know, or accept or whatever, yeah, it's just a, an, one additional sentence that I thought clarified Baker Adams intentions.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Send it to me if you think of it.
Okay.
Alana and I.
Yeah.
It did not change what you had, added one sentence.
Clarity.
So I think we're done, is that clear?
We're done.
Okay, there is.
I just wanted to mention something, um.
Almost done.
The phone system at the high school crashed. So there was no, um, way to call in, couldn't call into the main, uh, central phone system.
Was that today?
Today, well, I think it happened over the weekend. Today, well, I think it happened over the weekend.
I think it happened over the weekend.
So you couldn't, you didn't even get a menu, so two lines were allowed to come in, and they were ringing at the secretary's desk, but she couldn't transfer them, there's no voicemail, so she could only take messages today.
So how did, like, attendance and all, that must be a reason.
That was, Peter wasn't happy, let's say that, so, um, so...
Can't still catch on to that.
We didn't, um, we don't really have a choice, I hate to put any money into it, because it's part of the project.
Right.
Um, but we are gonna have to replace it with, um, the cheapest thing that we were able to do is right under ten thousand dollars. So they're doing it tomorrow. Um, we take it out of maintenance, we do have money in maintenance, um, and then I guess we're gonna be able to use that system at Pearlie, so that they'll still...
So at least, oh, right, so at least we can use it.
Right.
It's not like it's...
There's a way to like, still use CIP, that's a conversation for another day, but, yeah.
So, is it only a day fix?
They're coming in all day tomorrow. They have to put a new phone in every classroom.
The teacher, you know, I mean...
A new phone, good phone has to go in every place that has a phone, it's getting a new phone.
Twenty-four phones.
Oh, my goodness.
So then they'll have a new, they'll have a new console, so Katie and Rudy will have to learn how to use that, all the voicemails will have to be set back up.
So do I, do...
It won't affect the end user, but we'll have some work on our end.
But do the families know this?
Peter sent out something today saying that there was...
I didn't get anything.
We could, we could, they could call out, you just couldn't get in. I mean, you could try, but you would get busy.
Yeah, we sent it out to people saying, if you're trying to call us, it's gonna be a problem.
Right, because I, I did. So the system was put in and...
Michael wasn't feeling well this morning.
The system was put in in ninety-six.
Yeah.
And they don't even, it was Lucent Technologies, they don't exist anymore.
I mean, it was all planned for in the renovation project.